Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming to see your city council. It's September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five. I'm Mayor Blackburn. I'm calling us to order. First thing we're all gonna do is turn off the beeps on our cellphones, please. Then we're gonna acknowledge the land we stand on as we gather today. We respectfully acknowledge that the land on which the city of Hood River sits is the ancestral home of indigenous peoples. This includes the Nez Perce, Umatilla, Warm Springs, Yakima, and other tribes who stewarded this land for generations. We recognize the lasting impact of colonialism and commit to working together for a more just and sustainable future. Then I'm gonna remind us all that in, uh, in harmony with the state's sanctuary status, Oregon is a sanctuary state, and in agreement with the resolution this council passed and recently refreshed, our officers do not assist federal immigration uh, action or federal immigration officers. Uh, maybe it goes without saying, but tonight it doesn't go without saying. So let's just all remember that. Now let's say, uh, stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Abigail, I understand we have an, an, an agenda correction because there will be no executive session. Is that right?
Yes, Mayor, that's correct. Um, and also, uh, Councilor Gagey is running late today, so, uh, depending on when she arrives, we might need to move the um, compensation, uh, resolutions for establishing official compensation because they need all seven of you here for that.
Great. So we'll figure out how to make that work.
Great. Thank you.
That brings us to business from the audience. We have a few folks who have signed up. Um, I don't know who was here last week, but I got obscenity screamed in my face. So now we're gonna have a little reminder about decorum. Now is the time for business from the audience. No person shall be disorderly, abusive, or disruptive of the orderly conduct during this time. There shall be no audience demonstrations such as applause, cheering, display, signs, or can, or conduct disruptive. Such conduct may be cause for immediate termination of business from the audience by the mayor. No person shall address council without first being recognized by the mayor. Please state your full name for the record when it is your turn. That said, first we have Ben and then Kate McBride. Make the, make the disc turn green by touching the white dot, Ben.
Three minutes?
There you go. Good, uh.
Is it three?
It is three minutes.
Great.
Tech.
Okay, now it's three, but less. Hi. Um, thank you for your attention. Okay. I'm here again to clarify and advocate for a, that the city should take a position of institutional neutrality in order to protect this institution. Um, foreign matters are outside of your sphere of influence. They take time and energy from city business. So in two thousand twenty-four, we spent six weeks discussing of, uh, foreign matters in the eighth, there was a, a lady came up and she had an unlicensed contractor putting concrete dust inside her house. And she needs attention right away. And there was a gentleman who had a twelve-inch pipe and a, I don't know, an eight-foot easement. And the contractor pulled out the pipe and it's gonna get muddy soon, and he needs your attention. And six weeks on foreign matters is, takes your attention and delays their satisfaction. Um, let's take ICE for an example. I believe that the council should vigorously and aggressively protect everyone in our, in our community, everyone. If you were to do a resolution on what ICE is doing at an international border, that distracts from your work here. Resolutions outside your mission sow division within our community. You started this with like, hey, you can be quiet. Like, you can talk, you can chat. And on September eighth, we agreed that we don't, um, we don't applaud. So neighborly chambers are places where people of goodwill can disagree. And tension is fine if we're talking about short-term rentals or whatever. But we do not want tense chambers that are divided by ethnicity or religion. And that's foreseeable. Like, that's predictable. So who's included, who's excluded? You could give yourself the impossible challenge of inventing an inclusive system to decide what to take up and what to leave behind, who to say yes to, who to say no to. When the crowd is big, when the feelings are fervent, what's your standard? If you do a resolution, you will create a prize, and every political group will want that prize, and they will fill your chambers. And you do reputational harm to this institution because everyone was elected and elevated based on bike lanes and short-term rentals. And that's what we know about you. Nobody campaigned on anything else. So you need a plan, you need a policy and a procedure. Institutional neutrality will protect this institution and its reputation. That's what I favor, but you have to develop a policy and be prepared. Um, and it takes, it's worth more than a few moments of discussion and a dismissal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Next, Kate McBride, are you in one line? Co- sorry, you were, the monitor was between us. Hello. Thanks for coming, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Kate McBride, eight thirteen Marion Street. Um, I have a different hat on this evening. I am on the Hood River Valley Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. Um, thank you for your service for Parks and Rec, Anna. Um, and we have a survey that is being, you may have gotten a, a card in the mail, hopefully. If you haven't filled out this survey, I'm gonna leave these with you guys tonight. There's a QR code you can use, which makes it easier for them to tally. But if you prefer to do paper, I'm also gonna leave those. These are all in English and Spanish. So I'm gonna leave these with Abigail, but, um, just, I'm getting my three minutes so people that do listen to your YouTube channel can hear this. Um, Sunday is the last day for this survey, and, uh, there are three options on there. And we're hope, and if you don't like any of those options, you can also choose do not like any of those options. So, um, everyone's included. Uh, we would love to get your opinion. Uh, we're gonna start putting this together to put some kind of a, a proposal out. Uh, probably within the next couple of months, maybe even sooner than that. We'll, we'll, we'll see what we get from this survey. But please fill out the survey, uh, because we, and if you have already filled it out and you know someone, a friend or a relative, please give these to them so that they can fill them out. We'd like to get as many as we possibly can, uh, by next Sunday. And thank you for your, for your work. I know how difficult it is sitting up there.
Thank you, Kate. Mari Ruth, and then Lorraine. Mari Ruth, and then Lorraine. I'm sorry, there was some beeping and stuff.
There's never another Mari Ruth, so I was. Good evening. Uh, my name is Mari Ruth Putzing. I live at eighteen oh six Avalon Drive. And I wanted to talk about a desire to reassure people about immigration enforcement in our community. I appreciate the desire to make people feel safe. It is terrifying. People are deathly afraid. Fear is toxic and it creates serious harms to our entire community, to all of us. Um, but most particularly to certain people who, um, have to wake up in the morning and go to school and wonder if their parents are gonna be there when they come home. The truth is scary and it's complicated. And reassuring people with outful transparency and honesty does not in, in the end, create trust. On August twentieth, there was a DEA-led, multi-agency drug task force, um, operation that took place here in Hood River. There were at least two ICE officers on the scene. An ICE officer, there were two men arrested. An ICE officer questioned both of them about their immigration status and their immigration history here on scene in the parking lot at Safeway. We saw that the DEA, who was running the operation, went on their social medias to thank their quote, "local law enforcement partners." A Hood River Police Department vehicle and officer were on scene photographed along with, um, known ICE vehicles and known ICE officer. I don't have any reason to think that the Hood River Police Department was intending to work with ICE or intending to enforce immigration law, or even that they spoke with any ICE officers. But when those truths are not acknowledged, it's difficult for people to trust what the city says. The DEA has long partnered with ICE. That has not changed, but it has increased. What has changed is the policies and the instructions to ICE officers. They have been ordered to arrest anyone they can. They have been allowed, in fact, suggested to engage in racial profiling. We are seeing now that so-called collateral arrests, bystanders, anyone who happens to be on scene, even if they were not the target of investigation and in no way involved, are being taken from our communities. So these things are terrifying and they are real and they are happening. I note that in the cover sheet for the agenda for today, it, uh, states that Norcore does not house ICE detainees. This is true-ish. Did anyone here see the story in the Oregonian of Nelson Pablo Morales? A man who was arrested by ICE and charged with violating Title II, Section two seventy-six of the Immigration and Nationality Act, which is a criminal violation of immigration law. And he was held at Norcore under contract with the US Marshals.
If you could wrap up, please, Mari Ruth.
Yep, I'm done. That have been deputized as ICE agents. These things are happening in our community. When we don't acknowledge the truth, when we don't recognize the ways in which we are complicit, we don't build trust.
Thank you. Now, Lorraine.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Oh, I just feel so small next to that. I am here tonight wearing a different hat. I am, uh, representing Hood River Adopt a Dog. And I just wanted to make it, um, public and shed some light on the situation that Hood River Adopt a Dog has found itself in, um, established in two thousand and seven. And the only, um, funding that we've really received has been through a generous gift from the Huqor Fund since two thousand and seven. And, um, when I joined Hood River Adopt a Dog earlier this year, it was brought to my attention that there was one more payment left in the Huqor Fund. So the city and this county is gonna be faced with, um, a serious problem, and that is how do we keep this all volunteer organization going? So, um, I've done my due diligence. I've met with Allison Williams first at the county. Um, I've met with Sheriff English, um, all supportive, Commissioner Babbitts, um, Abigail, Councilwoman Stupina, um, and I just would, um, like the, um, both agencies to really take a look at how we can help keep this organization going. Um, it's a, it's amazing the amount of work and effort that goes into that shelter and the dogs that are saved. Um, we have, um, a number of dogs actually in custody at the moment that, um, are victims of animal neglect. Um, and there, there's a lot, there's just a, a lot happening there. So I know the budget cycle is coming up and I know the city and the county all talk about these things, and I just, um, would really, really appreciate it if this, um, was taken really seriously because it's, it's just tough to get donations the way it used to be. And it costs hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to run that shelter, and we're just aren't gonna be able to do it on donations. It's, it's just not gonna happen. We've made outcries to the people of this community before and they've come out and they've supported. But we can't keep doing that year over year. People are just gonna get, you know, tired of the cries for help, you know, from them. So, um, I just, um, that's really all I wanted to say. I guess I really don't need three minutes. I just really hope that everybody can really work together and help us to keep the shelter supported and, and going. So, thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming. Thanks for volunteering down there.
Yeah, you bet.
Matthew Barman.
Remind me where I push?
You did it. It's raining.
It's great.
Pre-pushed.
There. Just thank you, Abigail. My name is Matthew Barman, also known as Matta Green, owner and operator of a local private transportation service based out of Hood River since two thousand eighteen. Again, I'd like to thank you for your time and efforts today in moving to update Title Five, Chapter five point two zero to reflect recent changes in the private for hire transportation market and its regulation in our city. I'm here tonight to offer comments and requests related to Resolution twenty-two-five dash twenty-five, which addresses adopting new transportation network companies, corporate license and driver fees into the improved consolidated schedule of city fees, rates, and charges for services, which you are considering tonight on tonight's agenda as an action item. My business's position is that the proposed annual TNC driver permit fee of a hundred dollars is too low, and we'd like you to consider raising it to at least five hundred dollars. I'd like to remind you that the, one of the intents of developing this ordinance was to level the playing field between traditional local taxi businesses that have been operating in our area since at least the nineteen seventies and the distant corporate rideshare services that have disrupted this sector nationally over the past twenty years. With such a low fiscal entry barrier for TNC drivers in Hood River, we are very concerned that our community businesses will no longer be viable in the face of increasing numbers of drivers serving our markets. Even though our annual taxi permit fees are a reasonable sixty-four dollars, please consider that we are paying for our own commercial insurance and business permits. Handle our own dispatching and scheduling. Take care of our own marketing. Organize our own accounting. Our members of the Chamber of Commerce and make in-kind donations to numerous local nonprofits, schools, and civic engagement organizations. We're doing our best to make our services visible to locals and visitors alike, but we cannot come close to the overwhelming advantage of the name recognition of an Uber or the ease of use of their app. As I presented you before, the council's making a valiant choice in welcoming TNCs into our community. Would you like to keep it more local, accountable, and unique, or would you like to encourage an idling corporate convenience? I'd also like to put forth the argument that we are more reliable transportation option in any case. Our regular posted hours of operation are from eight in the morning to at least midnight and one AM, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. We stick to a commitment of being available during those times just about a hundred percent and are open to outer hours possibilities as needed. With TNCs, there is no guarantee or accountability for ride availability. If their presence drives local providers out of business, I'd argue that the private transportation market would become less reliable, not more. TNC drivers have it easy entering the market. The corporation takes care of most everything for them. They can easily earn enough for their hundred-dollar permit in one day of driving. And are they even paying for themselves, or is this just the cost of doing business? Please seriously consider a more appropriate fee amount. If it's not already the case in the staff's negotiations with Uber, please have the TNC drivers pay the city directly. Again, thank you for your attention to this issue and your work in service to the public. We look forward to continued dialogue and building consensus around fair, workable management for local private transportation sector. I'm available most anytime for further discussions.
Thank you, Matty. We'll move on to the Chief of Police.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. Um, tonight, um, we're gonna look at a presentation from, uh, John from FFA Interior Designs regards to, uh, a need the police department's needed for quite some time, i.e. as the city is itself. Um, this has gone back since two thousand and ten when we were placed into the, uh, then it was the basement. Before that, it was, uh, an art center. Before that, it was the parking area for the local fire, uh, trucks back in the day. Um, we go back to two thousand and ten, but I was thinking about this, uh, since I've worked for the city going on twenty-eight, twenty-nine years now. Um, this has gone back since, uh, Chief Rich Yonkins was, uh, uh, the Chief of Police, and I don't know if you remember that name, close to twenty-eight years ago. Um, where we've kind of bounced around. We've had several ideas and prospects of a potential building or a different site. Um, in two thousand and eighteen, the city council had a goal where they would like to kind of review and did a space needs analysis. At that time, McKenzie received the bid. Um, Gladys was involved with that and did some tours with us and such. Um, that kind of, uh, the fire kind of burned out on that. Uh, the council was looking for direction, probably with the, that, that time the county was looking at to, to build a city and county courthouse facility, kind of like, we'll use the word justice center back is what we use that in language. Um, there was no foothold. Nothing was transpired in that. Um, and most recently, the county has looked at, um, a countywide facility, uh, not just a justice center or police fire or police, uh, courthouse, uh, center. So much larger, uh, platform than we looked at a year or two ago that we were thinking of. Um, knowing that that was gonna happen, we set aside in two thousand and twenty-four a, a small sum of money to participate in that space needs if that's where the city wanted to go. Uh, that direction didn't happen, so we utilized that sum of money to go out. I know years ago, they were looking at, um, space needs in our existing floor plan. What could we do to, uh, improve that? Um, so we went out for bids, uh, received three bids at that time. Ultimately, FFA, uh, was the chosen one, thought they could do the best opportunity for the money we had. And today we are here with John. Uh, Ian couldn't make it, other, a commitment, his partner, um, to just kind of show what, what, what the space we have downstairs and what potentially we could do with that space, not only the space itself, some cost, uh, projections, future costs and potential we could look at. And then we're not looking for any decisions tonight from you. Um, this is just basically for you to receive the information that we have. Um, give us feedback, definitely. Is this the right angle we need to take? Should we just nix it? It kind of falls in suit with, uh, Wheels' idea of coming up with the bond strategy. Another one of those platforms maybe we can look at for this is, it's, it's definitely one of those bond needs that we'll have to look at down the road. So with that, I'm gonna give it to John, uh, he'll handle it from here.
Thanks. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Marion City Councilors. I will get the presentation pulled up.
I guess I should say, so I don't wanna catch him off guard. Um, during this, we, we brought John in and we actually, um, not only looked at the police department, there is a little nugget there we threw in since boots were on the ground, we were here. What would it look like to add a second story onto the existing one-story piece of that where we could add more space for City Hall in itself? So you're gonna see a small nugget at that as well. It's very broad, very open, but we thought, you know, when you've got people working here, um, I, John looking at it, what could we do to lessen the impact, as you know, is, is occurring and has occurred for some time at City Hall, so.
Definitely. So John Pete, Associate Partner with FFA Architecture. We specialize in public, um, designs and facilities, and my career's actually focused on essential facility design and law enforcement design. So very excited to share kind of our ideas, thinking about how we can get the most out of this building here. And so our agenda today, um, is just kind of review what we've seen with the challenges with the current facility. Um, talk through some preliminary sketches that the chief was mentioning, and what would be possible, how we could make the most, um, out of the space. And then look at kind of what we're seeing in the construction market now and a cost estimate for the work. And so with the current deficiencies, um, you're in a very old building right now, right? So it's over a hundred years old. As the chief mentioned, it's been through a lot of different uses. Being down there, there's really a lack of mechanical, electrical plumbing systems just straight off the bat. The ventilation's down there really poor, so officers processing evidence, working with, you know, dangerous things like fentanyl, there's just not the airflow down there that we see in other police facilities. Um, there's also not drinking water, right? The plumbing system's so old. And then just the acoustics, construction, privacy. There's a lot of challenges just with the old building itself. Um, and then looking at just making a lot, it's a very small space that they're trying to get a lot out of it. Um, but it's just missing a lot of spaces that we see the public, for as an example, when you come in to report a crime, talk with an officer, all that happens in the public lobby, no privacy, no separation, um, very challenging kind of interaction. And then, um, just size of facility, just doesn't have the space for equipment, technology, kind of operations for detective patrol officers to really support the work that they're doing in the community. And then, um, on resiliency, there's no generator backup power, right? So power goes out, there are no operations out of the PD. And then we also looked at, we had a structural engineer as part of our scope and looked at the seismic resiliency of the building. So there was improvements, and we dove into the drawings from two thousand and eleven of just strapping and figuring out how to kind of stabilize this building. So that really helps from an occupant, um, life safety, be getting people out of the building safely. But those improvements didn't bring it up to essential facility standards. So it's not a building that the city can rely on in the event of an earthquake, natural disaster. It's not gonna be a hub of operations. Um, and this is a unique thing, um, that we'll talk about as we go through the presentation, is there, the state does provide grants for seismic improvements, especially for first responder essential facilities. So this is an opportunity for the city to, while you're having a contractor out here, you can do the seismic improvements to potentially bring this building up to essential facility. So it's now a resource in an emergency response for the city, and there's grant funding um, potentially available for that up to two point five million dollars. And then with site concerns, um, I, you probably all know that ramp that goes down here in the background, very challenging even on dry conditions to get in and out of that, let alone we hit the winter weather, rainy, snow events, ice events, uh, very challenging site concern. And then, as the chief was mentioning, just with the city hall, we're gonna displace some record storage and kind of elements in the basement with the remodel as well as thinking through those seismic improvements. When you have a contractor out here, um, the presentation does factor in how you might be able to think about the building long term, um, and support some of those city, city hall functions. And so the next, I'll walk you through kind of the concept design. So this is the existing floor plan. I think what's unique, uh, when we look at this is this zone in the middle here, there's a central stair that connects the two levels right now. And then there's also this big vault in the middle, and that's just this object in the middle that the PD's kind of working around. In reality, those two levels don't need to be connected, so removing that stair actually helps opens up that. And then the vault isn't, um, a structural component per se. So as we seismically stabilize this building, we can remove that vault both on the first and second floor, and that really opens up the center down there. And then the gym storage area is an area that that, the gym memberships could be, you know, off-site or through a membership. So we really looked at how you maximize operations and those daily functions downstairs to get the most out of it. And so this is a preliminary sketch of what a, the potential layout could be for the basement. Um, I think what's an opportunity here is this used to be a fire station where they would actually drive rigs and apparatus through the center of it. So it is really wide open, so we can open it up. And then as part of the seismic improvements, um, we basically need to strengthen the exterior walls and then tie them into the floor and roof. And that's easy on the roof because we can just remove the insulation, put now plywood and strap it in. Um, the idea is that we don't want to disrupt the city hall spaces themselves, so we're gonna actually open this up and attach plywood on the underside of the floor structure and tie that into the walls. And that allows the PD to really just And that allows the P D to really just open up the floor plan and get as much use out of it. So we're showing offices on the north wall, um, a main kind of multipurpose space, getting their training, meeting functions, everything kind of in the center. On the public side, we have report taking spaces, so you have that privacy off of the main lobby. Um, that's the space here where you can have a private conversation with the officer as well as interview spaces that don't currently exist. And then we have the patrol area right next to where their vehicles are going in and out on site and then a small break room, locker room space. In the southwest corner, but I would say this is about four thousand square feet. So it's not, they're not getting all the spaces they would in a new police facility. But we worked with them very hard to find as much, like, how can we get three or four uses out of one space? And really open it up, that flexibility, just the amount of walls and the existing configuration downstairs doesn't provide. So trying to get a lot out of a little bit of space. And then this is an existing drawing of the second floor plan. So this is the council chambers we're in right now. This is this existing vault that would go away in the improvements and then the stair right here. So there's some opportunity on the second floor, just to improve city hall spaces and kind of what that center of the building could look like. And then um, city hall, when you start to look at this, I mean, there's a lot of staff sharing that, sharing areas currently. So when we look at the outside of the building, um, there's a unique geometry to it where we have kind of the square box we're in upstairs. And then the kind of L shaped lower level. And so the area in orange could be an opportunity to have a contractor in outside. You're going to go through some seismic improvements. We could actually use that orange space to help stabilize the building. Um, and also create more city hall staff on the, or city hall space on the second floor. So when we go through the pricings, our intent today was just to provide you a range menu of options. Um, of what's possible, but that's an option um, for city hall. As well as we included in the budget, the ability to kind of straighten out this retaining wall and provide more clear, direct parking as well as some cover parking. On the outside as part of the base scope. And then when we talk about costs, we always want to just walk through what goes into a construction budget. Because there's a lot of cost per square foot numbers thrown around, a lot of comparisons out there in the market. Um, so I wanted to walk you through the way we build our budget, so you kind of have an understanding of the different layers that go into it. So hard costs, um, those are your direct construction costs. That's what you're going to be paying for kind of labors and materials on site. And that's something our cost estimator, we're seeing all the bids out there right now. We can look at all those materials and really pull in some tangible. Market given driven data for your hard costs. And then the margins and adjustments, those are all the phasing, general conditions, bonds and insurance. Um, all the elements that you're going to pay kind of the G C to manage the job and phasing of the work. Um, but that's all kind of the margins and adjustments that go into building the budget. And then both of those are based on today's dollars. So if we were building a building today. Um, and then we were going to want to think, okay, you're going to go through a grant cycle, you're going to go through a funding cycle, then we're going to design the space. So we're looking at about a year and a half, two years out. So we're going to escalate those costs um, to the anticipated bid date. And then you have the soft costs, those are your design, permit fees, um. Kind of all the furniture A V that goes into a building, like to use analogy, you know, you take a building out and turn it over and dump it out. It's all that other, other intangible stuff. You're not paying a contractor, but what you need to really make the space operate. Those are your soft costs. Um, and then the last thing is just with a remodeling, any kind of planning project specifically with a remodel. You want a level of contingency, so you go up to the voters for a fixed amount and you don't have to go back out there um, with unforeseen conditions or anything. So there's a contingency that's added on to those costs. So that brings you to a total project cost. So that's kind of how you start of like, where, which you're paying the contractor. And then how you're building the budget and anticipating that out long term. So the city has a fixed amount that they're going to pay for the project. And then the second slide is um, we track construction cost indexes, and this is just from Mortison. This is the um, construction cost index they carry. But you start to just see escalation, inflation um, over time relative specific to our market here in the Pacific Northwest and construction costs. And one of the things is there was a slight dip in two thousand nine. But other than that, everything has really gone up at the rate of six to seven percent on average per year. Where you get, and then in twenty twenty, this is when you get the big job, right? This is when we saw the plywood prices double and really challenging in the construction market. And then what you see is the last next four or five years, that price didn't go down. So it stabilized. We didn't see that big jump anymore that cut everyone off guard. But that price stabilized. So when we look at escalation, um, we're always, it's, it's not going to get cheaper over time, right? There's two times where the construction markets dip, that's in two thousand nine and then the Great Depression. And those two scenarios aren't great, are challenging environments that um, we're not trying to anticipate or kind of plan on. So that's why you see us having an increase in cost over time. And then, so here's our cost summary and we provided it in a menu again, so you have kind of all the information. Um, available, the existing demo and seismic strengthening, we isolated those two out because those are a potential where the grant will fund. That grant up to two point five million dollars will actually fund the demo. It'll fund the seismic strengthening for the essential facility components of the building. And then it will also pay to replace, so there's part of the new construction that will also help fund. So that's something we can work through a grant application and kind of break down those costs, but there's potential grant funding available for those. The first floor improvements, P D construction, that includes both the layout you saw, it also prices in new systems. So that's new mechanical system, plumbing system, um, kind of all those outdated systems um, for the mechanical and everything that we see down there. There's new, there's costs to replace those. And then the city hall addition that we showed as that box in orange, as well as a site improvement includes straightening things out. That also includes a generator cost to back up the P D. And then the planning for escalation, the soft costs, and then the owner's contingency. That brings the total budget of the tour to take all the menu items to eight point six million dollars. And then the next slide, we basically rolled everything up. So now you have a true kind of menu of those five kind of alternate bits we explored with the P D. And um, how that would be distributed. And so that gives you a summary of kind of the challenges we see with the P D. The potential to reconfigure that space to make it more than just a temporary solution, get it to really meet their operational needs longer term. And then what the potential cost would be for the project.
Thank, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, are you going to talk about next steps or is this a kind of a question?
I think it's a more open question.
Great, okay, good, yeah, yeah, good, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks for that. Thanks, chief. Abigail, I think we're not, as the chief indicated, we're not making a decision tonight, but.
That's right, there's no motion in your.
This is the talk about it.
Mm-hmm.
Great.
Thanks. A couple of questions. Um, there's a number of things you could have built or included in these plans. Number of elements that are in common police stations, Sally ports, for example. Um, how did you determine which elements to include and which to exclude?
That was multiple design workshops with the P D or a multi, multiple layouts. So I think prioritizing the patrol workspaces and getting that set up with the flexibility to both handle daily. Kind of operations as, as, as well as disaster planning, kind of prep for the space. And then it truly that meet, there's no meeting space down there. There's private offices, no acoustic. So that meeting central space and getting that to be a meeting space, training space, really that kind of hub for the department. Um, those two were the key priorities. The Sally port, I mean, it, it's definitely something we recommend as professionals and you see, but you're so close to the county jail. The plan wasn't to do holding cells and bring suspects here. So there's not that significant concern where this is more a police operations zone and not a booking area.
Yeah, and I just mentioned Sally port is one example of one element. There's a number of elements you could have chosen gone with.
Yeah.
Curious how you chose or prioritized which elements to keep and would not. Um, for es- escalation, did you as, assume a seven percent escalation per year? Or did, was that just seven percent to Q one of twenty seven?
That was Q one of twenty seven. So we are seeing it go down slightly and that, you know, we're in the range of like three or four percent per year. It's something we were writing, you know, a year ago recommending more nine percent per year. So we've, we've seen it level out. Um, but that is a number that we're anticipating based on what we're hearing from our cost estimator.
Okay. Um, so assuming, assuming that we would have a contract signed in place. At that point, we wouldn't have any cost escalation past that point at seven percent is what the uh, what you're presenting to us, correct?
Yeah, that, it's when you go out for bid. So there's a design phase of when we would still work with the P D, this is a very preliminary sketch. So there'd be a lot of engineering, analysis, structural engineering that would go into this process. That would take a certain proportion of time before the drawings would be ready for bid. So there would be a design phase we did anticipate in the scheduling.
So it's into my next question. Um, you have contingency at fifteen percent. Um, what percent of design is the project currently at?
Very, or like five or ten percent, like it's, it's a very rough concept. So, yeah, it's um, I think with especially a remodel, right? We haven't done any investigative demo, really, like our structural engineer's been out here, we popped up ceiling tiles, we've looked at existing drawings. Um, but that contingency is always kind of a, a challenge, I would guess.
Correct. Next, that's it.
Thank you for being here. You mentioned uh, something about a grant. Can you help us understand the process for the grant? When is the deadline for the grant? One of the dollars to be awarded and how that would potentially tie into the preliminary sketch that you've shared with us?
Yes. So the grant is a seismic rehabilitation grant program. So the S R G P, that's the acronym they typically use, that's administered by the state. Um, it goes through a cycle of every year, so the applications actually open up this fall. This is something I think Hood River Fire actually was successful at this a while back, um, and getting the grant as part of some of their facility work. Um, but it's for schools and essential facilities and for first responders. And the intent is they will pay again the demo costs, the seismic strengthening costs. And then the replacement cost to kind of put back what you had to take out for the seismic work. Um, up to two point five million dollars. And so our structural engineer, W R K, who's now I M E G, they are very, they submit thirty, thirty-five applications a year. As part of their work kind of statewide. And they, their assessment in reviewing the drawings as Hood River does has a very strong case. You're in a, they want to see, the state wants to see the most money, be able to achieve success. And in an old historic building like this, the impact of the seismic strengthening to bring this to an operational ready facility. There's a lot of high investment, but these dollars should go into work really well in the community. So um, there's a good case with the existing analysis we've done. We could put an application together potentially this fall that could get submitted, so you could know by next year, spring. Um, if this grant was awarded or not.
Thank you for that. I'm hearing you state that it's a competitive grant, but I'm also hearing you state that you have collaborated with folks within your organization. And that this has been a grant you've been awarded in the past?
Yes, definitely. We have a lot of experience applying for this grant.
What does the reporting structure look like? So you get the dollars, you build the thing. What sort of reporting would we have to give back to the state?
Um. I can provide you more deep, like as a follow-up, but um, it would definitely be something where you keep the state updated on. So that we're going to put together a preliminary design that's part of the application. That design would then get refined through the design process and we would keep the state updated with cost estimates and design progress. And then there is a certain window that that construction has to take place in. Um, and then there would be observation reports that would be submitted back to the state to make sure what is getting built on site is aligning with the dollars and funding. And that's all part of that funding application, once that grant is awarded.
Uh, it's mentioned, just a clarifying question, it mentions existing building demo uh, here. What does that entail exactly? Talking about like taking out walls and.
Taking out all the existing walls, mechanical, and that's basically, we need to really open it up to apply that. Uh, plywood to the underside of the deck and strap everything together. So all that demo really opening up the P D on the lower level as well as selective demo on the upper levels. As we think through stre- strengthening the exterior walls and stabilizing the building.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Follow up question on the grant in the last thing in my mind. And then I ask questions to, I'll think I put you on the spot, I have some questions for you. Um, my first question, oh, am I off? Sorry, thank you. Uh, my first question is, um. The grant that you were talking about, that's only applicable if, if this were to be remodeled for the police station. But if we were to u- utilize that space, if we found another space for the police uh, operations. Would we still be potentially eligible for that grant if we were just to use it to update this space or the city hall?
It's not eligible for really new construction. So if we were to design and ground up new police facility, that's not what the grant is.
No, I get that, but if, if, could we, could you still get the grant? Um, if the space that you were updating downstairs in this building was just for city hall and not for the police station?
No, it is just for essential facilities. So it would be, that's a little bit of the nuance of a shared facility is to grant up all the essential spaces would be covered, right? So all the lower level, this main space in here would act as emergency services kind of operations center. As a kind of command hub in a disaster and those type of things. But like a city hall office as an example, the, the city hall is just considered an office, it's not part of the first responder grant application. And so there is a little bit of nuance as we would put that grant application together to clarify what city hall function? And what is essential facility first responder in the building?
Got it. Thanks. Can I put you on the spot a little bit?
Me?
You can tell me no. Um, I have a few questions for you. Um, this, does this, does this plan work for you?
This plan is the best option we have today.
Okay, um, if I could wave a magic wand and give you an opportunity to have. Like, I mean, we're going to be talking about our bond and stuff and, and coming up with some other ideas. Would you, is it worth waiting or do you, I mean, I know you guys have been waiting. But um, does it make sense to try to move forward with a project like this? And will this work for your needs, given that we anticipate growth in our community with the West Side development and stuff? I mean, how long would this facilities actually work for you? If, if we get the population growth that we are kind of anticipating?
Well, if you thought about the two thousand, I don't know if you looked at the two thousand eighteen study nineteen from McKenzie. And when that, that proposal first came in, it was over sixteen thousand square feet for a thirty plus year uh, facility. Um, we narrowed it down with council's decisions and guidance to about thirteen and some change. Uh, taking out a few needs that we thought we needed to need, but we were trying to shrink the size. This is about four thousand square feet. Um, just kind of give you an idea picture. Um, the other proposals have not gained traction, haven't worked. One of the biggest issues was what land, what location actually would, would the city be willing to give up to actually build a police department? That's where we were at, at, at that time. Um, and it didn't gain traction. Um, for what we have today, we are taking out, as John has said, every single wall downstairs is gone. It is going to be just a open shell structure, starting from design back. How do we replace that? And what's occurred in our department is probably the deficiency of it. One, air HVAC, cooling, heating. I, I want to wear a coat, guys want to wear, you know, you know, T-shirts in the back room. Um, is we built so many walls within there that everything is just becoming clunky and inefficient. So the desire, desire here is what we're seeing and what we spoke about for the last several months. Open that plan up, develop something that does have flow and that actually has multi-resources like the conference room to the meeting room. Multitude of investigation rooms, uh, when, I think Brandon mentioned about a, a security uh, location for individuals. Well, we, we have a, now we'll have a door to go to the back and actually have a secure investigation room. It's not a locked jail type facility, but it is a, an area that there's safety there. So for the four thousand square feet, we potentially could have to remodel the whole thing, wipe it out, zero, rebuild the walls. I think it's a great plan and a great opportunity. Um, our growth in the city of Hood River, I don't think we're growing that much. If you look at the school system, population and such, we are much less quicker to grow than we were before. Um, what I'm seeing, I've been around it for a little while. Um, so is this a thirty year concept? I don't think John or I would say, yes, it is. Um, but I think it definitely meets the needs and it's definitely a quicker fix than a potential long-term goal. And, and you gotta look at the compound of costs on top of that. And that, that number when I saw it, and I think Will would probably say the same thing. It's just mind blowing for where we were in two thousand eighteen, where we could have had a standalone building that we were thinking close to that number. It's just mind-blowing for where we were in two thousand eighteen, where we could have had a standalone building that we were thinking close to that number in cost in eighteen to see where we're at today. But the escalations of costs, as you saw in the states, the markup, um, is grown. So I love the idea of, you know, I would, Dulce and Tree would have a standalone building, perfectly built. It made the bill, you know, when you build it from the foundation up, this is before build a home or anything, you build it for the design you want. We're going to make this square footage, make it work within our compound and also the, within hopefully a budget that's affordable for the community, so.
If I could add just a comment about that, just thinking ahead, if we were fifteen years from now, um, we had the ability and the means to build a police station. I believe that the work being done here would be easily flexible if we wanted to move other city services into that space. Um, similarly, if, uh, policing changes as it has over the years, uh, this design is flexible enough that if ten years from now, we need to rearrange things or to have another service, um, this space allows that kind of flexibility. And if, even though the, the walls don't grow, the space can be better used.
And I think it makes a great point that you're, and it's, can another service go and utilize that s- square footage? Us being essential services, we're going to be able to upgrade that to seismic needs and requirements and responsibility. It's not only going to make the downstairs better for us, it'll actually make it more, stronger up here as well. And then as you say, if we did leave in fifteen years or whatever that may be down the road, um, um, it'll be space that's definitely seismic strength and, you know, ready for that next person to step in. I, I would, John, correct me, once we're there and we leave in fifteen years, they're not going to say we want our two point five million back. You know, we'll be leaving there and, and actually upgrade that for two point five million potential grants, so.
Thank you.
Doug.
Thanks, I think all my questions have been asked. Um, last one I had was, was sort of related to, um, what Abigail was saying around, you know, could have, could the facility be used for something else? I had that question, but I guess the looming question is, is while, you know, if you're looking at the new city hall addition, you mentioned the grant can be used for seismic improvements, et cetera. Putting that floor up there is, is something that would improve the, the seismic, uh, integrity of the building. Can you talk a little bit more about that, about how that, you know, how that works? Where, you know, we're adding city hall space, uh, you know, but it's, it's tied to a grant that's for, you know, et cetera, right?
Yeah, so what the state is looking for in application is how we stabilize the whole building as a whole for an earthquake. So where we will put our sheer walls, um, to basically stabilize the floor and roof, hold the building together as well as essential facility. All the systems need to be tied together, like we can't, all the mechanical, electrical backup systems need to be tied together. So we're going to add a sheer wall somewhere along this kind of north edge.
Mm-hmm.
And with that addition going out there, that's an extension of that wall. So there is a potential, instead of doing ripping up portions of this wall and doing the sheer elements kind of the interior of the building, that addition could incorporate some of those sheer elements to really help stabilize the building as a whole. So from a seismic grant perspective, they're paying for the sheer wall improvements to stabilize the building. Um, from a design opportunity, we're creating some of that shared structure as part of that enclosure, um, to help support the spaces and overall. So it's not going to put like all that exterior walls and windows and stuff like that. It, the state's really looking at the seismic performance of the building. But just with some of that addition construction, we have the opportunity to think through how we get the most bang out of the buck with the contractor on site and minimize the disruption to city hall.
Okay, and A- Abigail, is there any thought that's been given to, I know it's just like there's ex- extra space for city hall right now. And, but there were, you know, some assessments done for downstairs about what that space could be used for. Was there anything looked into that additional space up here might be used for?
We haven't done any, um, particular study, but I think I can, uh, I can list a couple of things that our second floor needs. So the first thing would be, of course, things that would get displaced by this, uh, first floor remodel. So we have a lot of public records and a little bit of, uh, storage downstairs. Um, we also have break room for staff, lactation space. Those are areas that we would need to account for on the second floor if these are two separate buildings, right? Um, so that's the first category. The other would be, and you heard me say this at your retreat in December, uh, that we do have staff who are doubled up, which, um, people are really polite and, and courteous to each other. But certainly on Zoom call days, that's pretty miserable, um, and they're on, uh, better space. Uh, and then the other thing I would say has happened today where, uh, we had, uh, two community or business group meetings. Uh, one, one took city, took this room, the other took my office, which is totally fine, but we definitely have a need for more space, you know, where folks can roll out plans and, uh, and meet. Um, but, and we totally make it work, but if we had more space, we could definitely use more meeting room and more flexible space.
Thank you.
We did it. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
That takes us to the consent agenda. We do have an OLCC permit application approval. I suggest we separate the Oran Sellers, uh, application out. I would entertain a motion on the employee policy handbook.
I move to approve the consent agenda employee policy handbook, item one.
Moved by Stapina.
Second.
Second by Rivera, discussion. Thanks Sandy for the work on this, if you're watching.
I, I had a quick question on that.
Yes, Grant?
Um, on page sixty-seven, uh, under sick leave, it has, um, the, the policy is that, uh, sick leave may accrue without limit, um, indefinitely. Um, is, is, uh, is that normal? Uh, or, or a more concise question is, uh, I, I would, after this meeting perhaps, it just, uh, perhaps might like some more detail about, um, how that accrual, um, uh, is accounted for over time, whether that's, um, at what, at what pay, um, that is over time. I don't necessarily need that answer now, but perhaps later.
Great, thank you for the question, counselor. I'll follow up tomorrow.
Thanks.
Further discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. I would entertain an, a, a motion on the OLCC permit.
So moved?
Moved by Stapina.
Second.
Second by Mitchell, discussion? Yeah, Gladys.
I will abstain from the OLCC permit applications. This is not a reflection of these establishments, businesses or other owners. Rather, I object to the fact that we don't have enough transportation options for people who visit these establishments. As a result, they may end up getting behind the wheel and putting themselves and others at risk. I'd like to highlight the broader public health responsibility we hold. A recent adoption of code allowing transportation networks is a step forward, but access remains limited, especially during late evening hours in our Upper Valley. If we and our countywide partners are able to provide adequate transportation during late evenings and weekends, I will start approving OLCC applications.
Thank you, counselor. Uh, moved and seconded, am I right? Yes, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Uh, for the record, uh, Councilor Rivera was the one who abstained. Uh, action items, planning commission, Dustin.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, uh, currently you have a number of vacancies on your planning commission, uh, at the request and direction of council. Uh, last week, we interviewed a number of candidates. This is a standing and open advertisement for positions, uh, within your packet. You have a recommendation to appoint two new members, um, that applied. Uh, there was technically three applicants, uh, to the, two open positions, or excuse me, the three open positions. Two of these, uh, were determined eligible, uh, because of occupation and membership, uh, limitations. Uh, so there's a recommendation in your packet after interview by, to your members and staff to appoint, uh, Michael Kits and, uh, excuse me, Matthew Pope, uh, to the planning commission.
Thank you, Dustin. Doug?
Uh, is Dan on? Okay, maybe he doesn't, he doesn't need to necessarily say anything, but, uh, I think Mike Kits is a fantastically qualified person here, uh, quote unquote retired. Um, there's anybody that knows anything about how to build an affordable house and et cetera, et cetera, in this community, it's certainly Mike Kits. Uh, I am concerned however, that, you know, uh, we've just removed somebody for being a developer. What's the legal ease on someone that's a former developer or, um, someone that's, you know, developed in the past year? Are we legally sound to have, uh, you know, Mike Kits in addition to two other members that are current developers?
Well, statute talks about people who are involved in land development or employed by a land developer.
So since he is no longer involved in land development, he, he would not be?
I mean, that, he would have to no longer, he'd have to meet that requirement. You know, I'm not, I'm not familiar with exactly his employment status right now, but it sounds like he is not, uh, a developer and is not employed by a, uh, company involved in land development.
That was confirmed in his interview?
Yes, actually, if I can jump in here, um, Gladys and I inter- participated in that interview and we did ask, uh, Mr. Kits that question. I believe he said his last project was five years ago. He's retired from that game, um, but still has several other businesses here in town, including Mike's Ice Cream, which we're all really grateful that he still does.
Oh, sounds like super specifically crystal clear here. This is not a third development person that's, would be statutorily not allowed until the end of the year.
Confirmed that he is retired.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Dan.
Mm-hmm. Uh, other questions on this topic?
Anna?
I just wanted to tell, um, Dustin, thank you for arranging those interviews and also thanks to Mr. Pope and Mr. Kits for throwing their hat in the ring. We need people to participate in planning commission. It's really, really important and I think we're lucky to have these two very qualified, um, great candidates joining our commission.
Um, question for the interviewers here. Thanks for doing that, uh, as a former commissioner who have gone through that, that process. Um, uh, in his answers and Mr. Kits' answers here, it says, "I would like to see the city work harder to develop entry-level housing for young families and employees, private and public that make the town work." I very much agree. I'm curious as to if he, um, expounded, uh, upon that point. Uh, and if not, I look forward to, um, hearing it from, from him, because I, I, I very much agree with that.
Definitely something that we had talked about, but, you know, he mentioned that he has experienced building over five hundred homes. And in that process that financially, he ended up losing a lot of money. So I think that's a very valuable perspective that he can bring of, you know, how do we ensure that other developers aren't in a similar situation where they're at a financial loss? So that we can get to more affordable housing, more entry-level housing? Did he mention anything else specific? I'm trying to s-
I, I don't recall that he said he, he, he lost money specifically, but he said he didn't make as much money as he could have because his priority was absolutely to make sure that he was building homes in this community that people could afford to live and buy into. So he's, you know, I think that, um, he, he definitely stated that that's a priority to him and he knows how to do it because he's done it in the past. So I think that him bringing that, uh, expertise, i- it is still a priority to him and I think that he'll be invaluable to have on the commission.
Yeah, I very much agree. I would love to, you know, hear more about it. Any ideas like, I'm open, like, let's, yeah, I very much, uh, happy to hear that he was interested and happy to hear that he's not involved in real estate anymore for the purposes of this commission.
Gladys?
Uh, yeah, so he brings a lot of experience and great perspectives that I think will be beneficial for the commission overall. I also just wanted to take a moment to highlight Mr. Pope. Um, I think there's a good balance of really experienced and someone that's newer. We've been talking a lot about what is the onboarding process look like for planning commission members? So having a brand-new lens go through this process, I think will be really beneficial for us. And also how do we ensure that that knowledge, we're taking that to give other individuals in our community? I think we still need to be really intentional about what our recruitment process looks like and maybe that's something that we do at a mid-annual session, um, to just diversify that, that pool as well. So I appreciate a new perspective and a very experienced perspective on the commission.
I guess, uh, motion if you're ready.
I move to appoint Mr. Kits and Mr. Pope to the Hood River Planning Commission.
By Rivera.
Second.
Second by Cavalieri. Further discussion?
Just a question, do we have to do it? That can be done in one motion, the same two people? Doesn't, okay, just.
I see the nod.
All gun-shine.
Thank you. Yep, thank you.
Make sure. Uh, I think we had a second.
We did, we moved and seconded. Any, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you, Mike and Matthew, welcome. And Dustin. Uh, utility fund financing.
Thank you. The, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six adopted budget provided a capital improvement plan, uh, that was, that in support of the water, sewer and stormwater funds. Uh, it also recognized that those improvements for the fiscal year would be funded, uh, with assistance from commercial bank or other lender financing, supported by utility revenues. Um, uh, this, the city is seeking loan financing, um, in the amount of about seven and a half million dollars. That's been identified as the, the current need for the fiscal year. Uh, the proceeds from the authorized financing would fund certain projects identified in the capital improvement plan, again, in the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Um, primarily, this is the elevated sewer project, uh, which is a critical improvement, um, to, uh, to underground the currently elevated sewer. Uh, primary clarifier repairs, uh, this was identified in the wastewater treatment plant, um, uh, plan. Uh, this is the first major project, uh, as it was from, um, recommended by that plan. Uh, and then, uh, the continuation of the, the leaded joint, um, replacements. Um, this is a, uh, project that has been underway, um, and there is a, a timeline consideration. Um, and so that it, it gets a certain priority with regards to the project. Um, those are the, the, the major projects. Uh, there are, of course, other projects that are ancillary, um, uh, and in the, in the, uh, the CIP. Um. It is anticipated the loan will be, uh, fully amortized or a fifteen-year repayment period at the best available interest rate. Uh, the financing is full faith and credit and would be secured by all lawfully available funds of the city. Um, the, uh, the financing is not secured by a lien on any revenues or any property of the city. Debt service is expected to be paid for water, sewer and storm revenues. Um, however, the revenues are not directly pledged through repl- replacement of the financing. Instead, that's the, uh, the intended source of repayment. Um, the city desires the most flexible payment options, uh, and requests the loan to be prepayable without penalty, no later than five years from the closing date in order to facilitate potential refinance or retirement. The city has engaged Piper Sandler as the loan placement agent and a legal counsel is being provided by Carol McCug of the firm Hawkins, Delafield and Woods. Uh, this combination of placement agent and legal counsel has successfully represented the city on past financings, including the last general obligation bond that was issued by the city. The financing team has prepared a term sheet, which was attached to your materials and that term sheet has been circulated for bids from participating lenders. We've asked for bids by the date, uh, the due date of three P M. on September twenty-ninth and the intent would be to close, uh, by the end of October. Um, the twenty-five, twenty-six adopted budget identified originally eight, about eight and a half million dollars of, uh, outside financing from commercial banks or other lenders. Again, as I've mentioned, we've now identified the need for seven and a half million, which is the intent of the authorization, um, plus about seventy-five thousand dollars for closing costs. The received these loans again are in the budget in the water, sewer, uh, and storm fund, um, by the, uh, allocated to individual funds. Financing costs for the loans, uh, are currently estimated again over a fifteen-year loan term. Um, we currently have assumed an interest rate of four fif- of four point one five percent, although the actual interest rates will be determined a time of bid. Uh, based on those assumptions, we've calculated by annual, by annual debt service of six hundred and ninety thousand dollars commencing September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six, so beginning the next fiscal year and then each March and September thereafter. Loan principal is allocated to each fund as required by the financing need for capital projects. Uh, financial analysis indicates that each of the water, sewer and stormwater funds can adequately pay for the cost of the financing from user revenue. And when combined with additional financings that will be required for future years, maintain adequate debt service coverage ratios over our ten-year forecast horizon. Um, at this time, staff requests that city council adopt resolution twenty-two-five-twenty, which would authorize the city manager, the finance director, or a person designated by the city manager to select a lender to provide financing in amount not to exceed seven million, five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and then execute loan agreements and any related documents defining all other terms of the financing. Please let me know if you have any questions.
This feels a lot like a bond. Help me understand why we can do this, but we're going to take it to the voters for a different amount.
Yeah. So, so if you recall, a couple of years ago, we went through an initial bonding conversation of which we looked at whether there are an act, whether a bond would be used to finance these, these public utility projects. The primary difference between this and why this can be done by council action and that, and the, the other bond discussion, the bond discussion that is occurring part two later today and then in the future is associated with a, with a additional levy that goes out to the taxpayers. And so that, that taxpayer levy is the source of the revenue by which that the bond is, the bond's debt service is financed. In this instance, we're looking at the utility revenue that is that, that's generated by each of the individual funds to service debt for the financing that goes to pay for those individual projects from those individual funds.
Thank you, Chris.
Anna and then Gladys.
I have a quick question. Your memo and the term sheet both mentioned that, that this is going to be expected to be repaid by water and wastewater revenues. What are we using that money? What are we doing with that money right now? What do we use the revenues for today?
So, so up until this point, most of the projects have been financed internally. And so that revenue has been used for operating expenses, debt service, right? And the repayment of loans. The difference is, is that the loans that we've generated or originated internally have a very, very short amortization period. And so, and for the purposes being is because those have been dedicated for other sources. And so we want to make sure that those loans have been repaid quickly. So the internal loans that we've done have been on a five year term as opposed to this, which would be a 15 year amortization. So those revenues have been used to, to repay debt service, although it's at a very accelerated schedule.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. What happens if the cost projections for the water sewer upgrades exceed the current loan requests?
That is, it never happens. It does. So, so each of our projects has a, has a contingency. We do understand that sometimes the projects are in excess of the contingency. What we looked at internally was if there were escalations in individual projects, whether or not other projects could get moved sort of to future years. So I think what we've, what we've done is try to balance, right? The, the financing with, with what we really think sort of project costs are going to be. I will also add that as it relates to some of the larger projects. So the elevated sewer project, the vast majority of what is being expected to occur during this fiscal year is design. And so there's a little bit of a less risk with regards to construction when you have design because it's more sort of, you know, sort of soft cost, right? And, and engineering designs. And with the primary clarifier, my understanding is that projects is again, is, is more sort of equipment based in installation. And so again, whether our sort of costing overruns not at the same measure sort of other construction projects. The leaded joint projects, we've, we've done a number of those, right? So this is a continuation of that presumably we've learned to sort of with regards to costs. But, but I, but I do acknowledge that, that, that we will experience cost overruns.
Thank you. So it sounds like overall there is a plan for contingency and some of the other projects that would come off if for whatever reason, costs were to exceed. Okay, thank you.
Grant. Similar questions have already been answered. Do you have offhand what the DS debt service cost ratios are per fund off the top of your head?
Yeah. So we, so I do not know per fund, but what we've, what we've tried to do over a ten, so we have a, we have a 10 year sort of forecast that, that we've worked on with public works. That 10 year forecast probably assumes the next five years that, that debt service coverage ratios range from anywhere from one and a half to 1.2. We've tried to keep that to, you know, we've tried to keep it within sort of within 1.2. I think at some point for the sewer fund in the longer term, we would get as low as a 1.1 debt service coverage ratio, but that's probably a seven to 10 year horizon. And I should, I will note, those are also dictated by a number of our loan covenants. And so the debt service coverage ratio guidance is, is to maintain the loan covenants that currently exist.
Eventually a motion, but whenever we're ready.
I move that the city council adopt resolution 2025-20 authorizing the city manager, finance director, or a person designated by the city manager to select a lender to provide financing in an amount not to exceed 7.575 million dollars and execute a loan agreement and any related documents refining all other terms of the financing.
Moved by Rivera.
Second.
Second by Cavallari. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes high, motion passes. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Now we have a funny thing that involves like allowing us to eat snacks.
Thank you, Mayor. You're exactly right. Or, or write with a city logoed pen. Or enjoy some of our very mediocre coffee. So this is an action I'm encouraging you to take based on an advisory opinion from the Oregon Government Ethics Commission that the small amount of food and drink and incidentals that you might receive from the city could be considered gifts and therefore need to be recognized as part of your official compensation. And as you might remember from when we did compensation a couple of years ago, you can't vote on your own compensation and therefore you have, I think we've got four resolutions of different configurations. So Dan is standing by if we have any questions. Otherwise I'm going to walk you through and let you know how you can play along.
So again, I, I was totally clip and I'll be only half clip. Like we're going to now choreograph a thing so that I vote on Doug's and Doug votes on mine. And this is truly just like going through the motions because we're not allowed to give ourselves a raise.
Exactly. And I'm very thankful that all seven of you are here because our charter requires four votes, not just a simple majority, but a minimum of four. So I will need at least four of you to vote when I, when you're called on.
Great. Carry on, please.
So we're going to begin the first, so if you have your packet, I don't know what page number this is, but you'll see who gets to participate. I also have to note, it was pointed out to me by a local resident that the resolutions all say beverages rather than beverages. So I want you to know these are about beverages, not about beverages, whatever those might be. So the first one is actually for appointed officials, being the people you've just appointed to the planning commission, the community members who participate on the budget committee, the mayor's equity group, when we have a community cleanup and we serve them donuts. So all of you can vote on this first one. So looking for someone to make a motion and a second and all of you can vote.
Can I ask a dumb question here?
Yes. That's why I brought.
Is there, is there any issue that I was appointed to council, not elected? I know this is an elected office, but I was appointed to it. I wasn't elected.
Oh, thank you for the distinction, but no, appointed and elected. So.
Thank you.
Yep.
Questions?
So you're, you're looking for a motion on 20, 2025-21. Is that right?
That is correct.
Yep.
I move to adopt resolution 2025-21 official compensation package for appointed officials and other city volunteers effective September 23rd, 2025.
Moved by Stapina.
I'll second.
Second by Rivera. And this one we can all vote on, right?
Correct.
Because this is appointed and Ben's, yeah, not that.
Right. He's covered in a seat.
Great. Any discussion on this? All in favor of this resolution number 21?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes high, motion passes.
Excellent. Thank you. The second resolution concerns the mayor. So the mayor will need to declare a potential or actual conflict of interest and then not vote on this particular one.
I declare an actual conflict of interest and I will not discuss or vote on this one.
Thank you, Mayor. Now looking for a motion in a second.
I move to adopt resolution 2025-22 official compensation package for mayor effective September 23rd, 2025.
Moved by Stapina.
Second.
Second by Cavallari. Discussion, but not by me.
And we all have to potentially declare some potential conflict of interest should we ever consider to do to.
Run for mayor.
Run for mayor.
Shall we each do that itemize?
Sure.
Amanda?
Sorry, confused. I have to declare a potential.
A potential interest if you may someday run for mayor in the future.
Possibly ever consider or whatever.
You could say, I'll declare a potential conflict of interest and move on to councillor Paulson.
I declare a potential.
I declare a potential conflict of interest should I ever.
If I was the mayor and wanted a granola bar, I'd also declare a potential conflict of interest.
I declare a potential conflict of interest.
Don't see myself ever running for mayor, but I declare a potential conflict of interest.
I'll do fame. I declare a potential conflict of interest.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Moved and seconded on resolution 22. Any further discussion? I'm not going to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair abstains. Motion passes.
Excellent. Thank you. And because you don't have a signed seats or district seats, I just divided this up by when your seats expire. So the next one are all the seats that would expire in 2026. That is councillors Mitchell, Paulson and Stapina. So I'll be looking for the three of you to declare an actual conflict of interest and not vote.
I declare an actual conflict of interest.
Conflict of interest, can't vote.
Also declaring an actual conflict of interest.
Thank you.
So we would like a motion from one of not them.
That's right.
I move to adopt a resolution 202523 officially official compensation package for council seats expiring in 2026 and their successors effective September 23rd, 2025.
Moved by Cavallari. Second by Gekki. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair is allowed to vote aye and votes high, motion passes.
And abstentions.
Abstentions?
Aye.
Aye.
The conflict of interest people abstained? Great. 23. Thank you.
Knowledge for votes. Great. And then our last one here is are the seats that would expire in 2028. So that would be councillors Cavallari, Gekki and Rivera need to declare an actual conflict.
I have an actual conflict of interest and I will abstain from this vote.
I'll just point out for, I mean,
Yes, I.
if it says beverage, it says 26, like it should say 28 in that second line, right? Okay. There, I don't think there's any confusion, but.
It's correct in the motion, but you're right in my comments. They're above this. You can tell that I copied and pasted.
Great.
I declare an actual conflict of interest and will abstain from voting.
I declare an actual conflict of interest and will not.
Great. I would entertain a motion.
I move to adopt resolution 2025-24 official compensation package for council seats expiring in 2028 and their successors effective September 23rd, 2025.
Moved by Stapina. Second. Second by Mitchell. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions?
Aye.
Three abstentions. Chair votes high, motion passes. Boom.
Excellent. Thank you all. I want to note that we are not alone in needing to do this. Most of the cities in Oregon are going through this process. In fact, the city of the Dawes is doing this today as well, as well as many of our special districts and our county will also be looking at this. Finally, the League of Oregon Cities has been talking to the governor's office just about this being a really de minimis rule and perhaps the Oregon Government Ethics Commission would want to reconsider and think about different ways to approach this so that you don't have to go through four resolutions in the future. So thank you all for this.
Thank you, Abigail, and you all for your patience. And on the other hand, like make no mistake, like a bunch of people got rich, like paying people off. So in, in the bad old days, stuff really happened. It wasn't about pens and stuff.
That's right. Yeah. Thank you for your commitment to transparency.
TNCs, Chris.
Great, thank you. So at the, at the March 24th, 2025 city council meeting, council adopted ordinance 2091, which amended Hood River Municipal Code Section 5.20, which provided for regulation of vehicles for hire within the city of Hood River, which, which now includes transportation network companies. Section 5, 2030 of the amended Hood River Municipal Code, regulating vehicles for hire provides for the license and application fees required for both taxi companies and now TNCs. These fees are traditionally adopted annually by resolution as part of the comprehensive fee schedule. That did occur for, for taxi companies. The addition of the TNC regulations for the amended Hood River Municipal Code now require city council to consider a separate resolution establishing fees for the, both the TNC corporate applicant plus each driver. And again, that's as described in section 5.2030D. Resolution 25, 20, I'm sorry, resolution 202525 establishes an annual license fee for TNCs of $1,000 for the corporate applicant plus a fee of $100 for each driver accessing the company's digital network to operate in the city. Licenses issued under Section 5.2 of the amended Hood River Municipal Code, sorry, 5.20 of the amended Hood River Municipal Code are valid for the calendar year. Annual license fees for tax cut companies and taxi cap permit fees for drivers remain unaffected by this resolution as they were established with the adoption of the fiscal 26 fee schedule. I will make a note responding to comments earlier that the fees are reflected in this resolution were created to reflect administrative costs. The staff did not look at these fees through the lens of either business or competitiveness. And these are generally reflecting the administrative costs we thought would be incurred in administering it. I will note that is consistent with the majority of the fee schedule that, that are sort of derived to reflect administrative costs without regard to competitive, competitive, competitive considerations.
There is a $1,000 charge for the company. This is just 100 bucks per person, right?
That's correct. That is correct. So at this time, staff request that city council adopt resolution 20, 202525 establishing the annual TNC license and the driver fee as required by the amended Section 520 of the Hood River, Hood River Municipal Code.
Thank you, Chris.
Ben and then Gladys.
I just want to make a small point that in the resolution, it has the date of September 8th on it. Need to be corrected.
Thank you, Chris. So you talked a little bit about how you all came up with that fee. How does the fee, how is that similar to other cities with Hood River size?
We believe it's comparable.
So earlier you heard in testimony that there was an individual that had mentioned that that fee should be $500 instead of $100. Can you talk about why or why not we would suggest to potentially increase that $100 fee to 500?
Yeah, I, you know, I can only speak to how we approached it from, from the staff level. What we looked at was to try to, try to make that the commensurate, what we felt the administrative process was going to be. So it is a little bit more administratively difficult for us to, to to manage the TNCs. Because we're going to, we are, we're requesting the TNCs on a quarterly basis and updated list of drivers as opposed to the taxi companies where it's a, it's a one time annual application. You know, and the, and the, the driver fee runs with the driver and a vehicle. And so this is, this is a little bit more, it's, it's a little bit more of a process for us. And then with regards to the TNC fee, again, you know, for the administrative processing and additional work, that's sort of, that's just how we looked at it. And then also we looked at what other municipalities were doing. So, so to your point though, we did not, we did not look at the fee with, with a lens of any either business terms, right? Or with the idea to, to make it more difficult.
I think I'm hearing you say that at this time, you don't have current capacity to administer this process.
No, no, we do, we, we have capacity.
You do? Okay.
Yeah, no, I, I think that what, what I heard from public testimony was the, the, the suggested $500 per driver fee right was in, in, in a to reflect competitive terms, right? To, to affect, to, 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 to address competitiveness. I just want to make it very clear that we did not look at that in our, and at, at the staff level, right? What we looked at the staff level was what will it take, what will it cost us to administer it? Which is how we look at most of our fees.
But it wasn't inclusive of, for example, whose time within city would be dedicated. would be dedicated to administering a new program in a way because we haven't had TNCs? What I'm trying to get at is, do, is this enough to offset whatever potential FTE we would be inquiring due to a new process?
Yes, when when we discuss this internally with our staff, it was probably more time on us developing the process so that it could be administered with the existing FTE. And so just to be, just to, as full disclosure, you know, Jennifer would administrate those the same as she administers the taxi licenses. And so it was designed in a manner that that she could handle.
Thank you.
Doug. I'm not sure if this is a question for Chris or maybe for Abigail, but you know, given the rate, the renewal fee, all this is put together in discussions with Lyft and Uber, I mean, do we expect, or I think specifically Uber, not Lyft, correct? We had any discussions with Lyft?
Right. Early when you started the process back in twenty twenty-three, I had some correspondence with Lyft. Since then, been unable to reach anybody from their office. Staff, city staff here have, including the city chief, city reporter and I have met with Uber twice. So we've made contact with their government affairs people. They know that we are discussing this.
Did they provide to you any numbers regarding what they would anticipate, how many drivers that that would be added? You know?
No, they had no, they had not done a market study or have any really projections about what to expect. And our conversation with them really was the regulatory framework in which they would function.
And when it comes to the renewal fees, the driver permit fees, I heard this was a game to other cities. Now, is this something that other cities would possibly be, you know, raising the fee or lowering the fee to get more, you know, more or less of of these drivers in the community? I mean, how how many would play for us? It's pretty boiling hot.
I think this is very standard. And then as they increase, it's just by the rate of inflation or however you're applying increases or changes to your fee schedule. I don't know of any city in Oregon, of course, I haven't done an exclusive study, but those that we have been kind of modeling ourselves after. Once they have set their fee, it's just gone up through whatever the normal annual rate is. I don't think anyone has revisited their fee or or made major changes to it. And I should say that. What's that?
That's it. That's true of the cities ourselves.
Yeah, and the cities that we really used as kind of our models or mentors have been the city of Newport, which is very similar to us, Pendleton, which is bigger, but but, you know, further away from a metro area. And then I think Central Oregon, Madras, Redmond, Redmond have been the the cities that we have modeled a lot of our stuff on.
Final question. If in two months, there's forty Ubers outside and it's more Ubers than anybody wants to deal with. Is is this, you know, can we decentivize, you know, all, if there's too many of them or something like that, is it could be raised the fee? There's not enough, can we can we lower the fee, that that sort of thing? How much is related to that, the fee?
Yeah. Certainly from a, you know, you are policymakers and you set the fees. That's one of the policies. So you absolutely have the ability to do that. Generally, our practice has been to stay out of the market or to, you know, we don't really try to influence market forces. But if you saw a good reason that you wanted to revisit this, you can do that with any time.
Chris, can you help remind the public how the city uses the fees from or would be using the fees from TNCs?
For for these particular fees, they're supposed to be on, so this becomes general.
Thank you. So something for us to discuss. And the reason that I asked that was because I had received feedback around how the fees are used. It would be important for us to factor in how would we potentially use these fees for more promotion, right, more or safety, just the equity component or how these fees could be used to offset actual infrastructure costs within the city? So I was curious to hear if any of you folks have any ideas on how do we intentionally use these dollars to give more information about a variety of our transportation options that folks have? I know that Katie's been here. She's been working with a lot of the folks within our current taxi companies. They've been doing a lot of education and marketing for current options.
I mean.
I'm sorry, Anna was next.
Oh, I thought I thought you were speaking to.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Are you asking for us to weigh on that, Gladys?
Okay, okay. I mean, I I personally would think it'd be good to get the information out there. I think it'd be nice to put the locals right at the top, you know what I mean? I think that if there are ways to throughout that process, you know, highlight our local options first, et cetera, I think that'd be something I'd be interested in as well of it, you know, but it's, it is something that has been a problem for people to really understand what the options are. I don't know. It remains to be seen what the influx may or may not be, you know, market demand. So we'll see.
Anna, and then keep in mind that the response, if you'd like to speak to Gladys's point, Anna, go ahead.
Dan, are you still on?
Yes.
Hi, I just wondered if on this topic, are there any legal risks or obligations in the city imposing a fee larger than just administrative costs to companies that are are larger outside or based outside of our our community? I just, are there, are there any concerns there?
Well, the the basic notion of actual or average cost of providing the services, the basis for all of our land use fees. I think that's what Chris is following here. That's that's required by state law. But this is not a land use permit, not a land use process. So that statute doesn't apply when it comes to fees like this. You, well, on another level, in terms of taxation, you're required to have equitable taxes, but this isn't a tax, it's a fee. And so if you look at it as a regulatory tool, then that would be the justification for having a differential fee schedule for for local versus out of town service providers. So yes, it's oftentimes these fees are regulatory tools. Land use fees are not supposed to be. That's why they're subject to the statute that dictates what the fee could be.
So not really any risks for if there's a somebody employed by an entity outside of our community and they were charged a greater amount, not based on just the administrative fee calculations, then that 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 would not pose any kind of a risk on on the city.
Well, there's always a risk, you know that. I'm not aware that this would be unlawful.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Grant. To attempt to answer Councilor Rivera's question, I'm not sure how to assign revenues when we don't know how much that is. So without having the program implemented and seeing how much it's going to generate or bring in, I can't provide a fulsome answer to something that we don't know, have any forecast on or know how how to assign anything or if it's the revenue from this will be assigned to the general fund, City Council can choose to delegate or allocate those funds as the council directs in the future. That's how I look at it.
I think I'm largely in agreement with Grant. For me, the purpose of this project is to create more transportation. The fees are like a side effect. And so let's see how much it is. And if that creates a heartburn for us that, gosh, we have this huge amount of money, we should really assign it more sort of topically. Well, then, okay, but that's, that's kind of not where it is yet for me. I want to, I mean, my goal is if it's quite elastic, I want a low fee because I want there to be a line of a line of cars out there to pick people up and get them home safely.
Thank you. I I hear I hear where folks are coming from. And for me, it's just being really intentional that we're introducing a new process, right? That's going to take some time to give education to our community, how to use it, best practices. And that that does require money in order to be able to do that and to do that well and collaboratively with all of our partners that we have within the city and then, you know, eventually even even the county, which is why I brought that up.
Eventually in motion.
Mayor, I just might make just two quick points. One is in our budget, you have financial policies, and I'm trying to find the language right here, but one of your policies are that that basically we have fees for the cost of doing the business. We don't have fees to generate revenue. So just to reckon, you know, those are you know, you can always choose to not follow your policies, but we do affirm those every year in the budget process. And the other one I was going to just note was, as you said, you know, the fees would go into the general fund, but I certainly am hearing you about the desire to, when this is up and running, to publicize all of the transportation options we have for people. We have a newsletter coming out this winter. I'll work with communications person, including Visit Hood River and Amy Schloppi, who's been really helpful in this process to make sure that the word gets out.
Guess the analog I'm thinking of is we charge people to rent the picnic shelter. You want to charge, otherwise, you know, people will just use it and it costs Jen's time to manage that. I don't feel strongly that that hundred dollars from the picnic shelter goes into like the parks promotion program. I just, it's a fee, it's a it's a fee to attempt to capture the operational burden and and just occurred to me. Gladys?
I move that the City Council adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five establishing the annual TNC license and driver fee as required by amended section five point two zero of the Hood River Municipal Code and incorporating those fees into the consolidated schedule of fees, rates and charges for the twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six fiscal year.
Move by Rivera.
Second.
Second by Gekki. I'm super eager to understand this and sort of tack this down. I've been frequently frustrated by Abigail's reports of like meeting with Uber and they're like, we're not going to tell you how many drivers and maybe they are or are not operating now, like, thanks for nothing is my reaction to that. I will buy a cup of coffee for people who send me trip reports of I tapped on the app, it said, yes, it's on its way, spin, 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 spin. No, it never comes, which I have done, and tap, tap, spin, spin, spin. Yes, it comes, which I have done. So like, it would be so useful to know if we're going to get some transportation out of this operation. So coffee.
Grant. On the motion, Scritter's edit on the date that Councilor Mitchell mentioned.
Yes.
That has to be added to the motion.
You need to make that amendment before you.
Make sure that that's noted, that's in there.
I already lost that packet argument. And to make a correction to the date on the resolution? Is that okay? The effective date.
Did we get it? We're okay with the second?
I think if the city recorder has it, I think we've got it. Thank you.
Staff says, I think we've got it. Great. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
This has been a long process. Thank you for the input. Thank you for all the pondering and heartache. It's complicated. But it's important and I really celebrate Council Rivera's sticking to her values and reminding us over and over and over that without adequate transportation, more liquor is a problem.
And I just have one final comment. You know, I know that Mr. Green was here earlier and I really appreciate all the local providers that have been providing transportation for our community for a number of years. But there was a, you know, a lot of analysis done and and we do not have capacity where it is now to be able to properly serve Hood River City residents in addition to our Upper Valley residents. So this is not something that was done to penalize any current transportation company. Simply, we do not have an adequate capacity to be able to properly serve such a number of of residents here.
Thank you. Before our discussion items, we're going to take a four-minute break. We are on the GO bond planning with Will Norris.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Blackburn, members of the council. Tonight is another in our series of just informational items.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Blackburn, members of the council. Um, tonight is another in our series of just informational items uh in preparation of our special um uh meeting on the twenty ninth. To really start making some uh decisions about how we're going to proceed or not proceed um with a bond campaign uh for November twenty twenty six. Um, so similar to um what I talked about on um September eighth, this is just informational, uh time for you to ask questions. Um, and uh we wanted to talk about uh in uh preparation for the a um not only the projects, but thinking about how we want to do engagement. Uh, on the twenty ninth, give you um background on the engagement that has gone into our existing capital plans. Give you a list of kind of all the capital plans that have already been adopted or in place. Um, and what uh amount of engagement is really already embodied in those plans. Um, but uh, but this is really just going to be, uh, I'm going to keep the presentation quick today. All the information's in your packet. I know you have some um. Uh, larger topics later tonight. Um, so it can be a uh like last time, also just a reference document that um we can have for when we start uh really digging on the twenty ninth. Um, so with that said, um, I'll just hit on some key aspects of um some of our existing capital plans and then open it up for any questions you have. Um, so first is uh transportation system plan and then uh start with that because it really is uh the the most important, both in the amount of. Analysis that goes into it, the scope of how much dollars in capital projects that it encompasses, and also the legal uh significance uh of the uh of the TSP. It was uh last kind of fully overhauled in two thousand and eleven with an extensive amount of uh engagement led by a community group. Uh, where the advisor group that had even a subcommittee of bike ped uh interests and really did a top to bottom um. Uh, um, overhaul that's both uh community led by uh kind of wants and desires and needs, but then fully supported by a lot of engineering and technical analysis. Um, creating the the two thousand and eleven plan, which has also continued to be a living document and updated through um a formal amendment process. Uh, one to incorporate elements of the West Side Area Concept Plan, which for folks uh who were around in two thousand seventeen knows how. How big of a uh engagement lift that that was as well. Uh, so incorporating elements uh from the West Side Area Concept Plan and then. Uh, most recently in twenty twenty four to incorporate the Heights Streetscape Plans. So um. Very much a living, a living document and a very seminal document for the city. Kind of the uh oppo- uh opposite from an engagement standpoint is our water sewer storm plans. Those ones uh minimal engagement, but very technical, just it's not going to be much public uh input on whether there should be a six inch line or an eight inch line, you know, running down um. You know, uh, an arterial road. So that one is like touch, it's just um but very technical in nature. I'd say the one uh. Ex- exception to that is the Stormwater uh Plan. Did have quite a bit of community involvement from uh kind of interested parties. Uh, back in the late twenty teens, uh led by uh Councillors Anner at the time pulled together a focus group. Of interested folks and they, what really came out of that is an emphasis on low impact development and um kind of green um um. Stormwater detention onsite treatment, things like that, where we go over and above just simply giving the water out to the the river as quickly as possible. Um, so that is one way policy has crept into that document. Um, next is the uh affordable housing strategy, uh led by a community advisory task task force throughout the whole process, but also with surveys, focus groups. Um, and uh adopted through uh resolution uh in the public session. And uh just note in there that uh it. Uh, included recommendations for two funding sources for affordable housing. One was the West Side uh Urban Renewal District, uh that one uh done. Then the other recommendation was for general obligation bond uh to support housing. Um, a police facility planning, talked about that quite a bit today. Uh, that work was done in the two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty. Um, supported by uh public, public facing webpage, which is still available and has a lot of good information on it. Um, and then also intergovernmental coordination with um county commissioners towards the end when we are um hoping to do a joint um. A justice system or justice uh building. Uh, we also have our Parks Multi Jurisdictional Master Plan. Uh, that one is really um. The uh stands out in that it's uh we've all signed on to it as local governments in the area, so it's not just ours. It's um. The Parks District uh has signed on, I believe, the school district, the county. Uh, so it's our our shared capital facility plan for um parks. And it's also been um incorporated into the West Side um just uh West Side Urban Renewal Plan. Which uh kind of gets into how these plans tend to build off one another and integrate with one another over time. And that's really a a major feature of long term planning and that gives you kind of other plans can come along and jump in. And uh kind of everyone rowing in the same direction and you keep um. Uh, your master plans ha- as your guiding uh documents. And then uh uh and then last but not least, Safe Rest School Plan that we did in two thousand twenty two. That had um some really creative engagement like um doing um bike tours. And also um benefited from technology like um online heat mapping of comments and some um really interesting stuff. Um, and then just to kind of circle back of how all these plans weaving together. The Safe Rest School Plan was incorporated into the Heights District Plan, which was then incorporated into the twenty twenty four TSP Amendment. So it kind of shows how these efforts build off one another and integrate to one another. Um, so just want to make you aware of those capital facility plans as we go into the twenty ninth and all of. That embodied public engagement as we think about um how we want to organize our bond ask. Uh, not to say that we can't do any new projects. We just want to uh make sure we're very aware and honor um the amount of work that went into creating our current lists. Of projects. So that'll uh answer any questions.
That was very helpful. Thank you, Will, for that context. It helps. Get my mind engaging. Towards, towards deciding. Questions or comments for Will? At this time, are we going to talk about what it's going to look like in a week or not yet, or like this, the actual session, like it starts at six o'clock and?
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll send out the agenda ahead of time. Um, we do have a plan, but um we're still doing some internal workshopping to really put the fine touches on it. So.
Good.
Um, no, we'll send you out some uh some information beforehand, but I don't want to uh get ahead.
Great, thanks, Gladys.
Well, with that, I. I guess what are you looking to hear from us today? Because I maybe I'm might jump ahead, so I don't want to do that.
Sure, uh, not uh looking for any direction today or any input or any decisions. This was purely informational. Um, you know, maybe file this away with that bond print, uh bond primer, or we'll have copies of it, but it's kind of like. A pre, pre homework for the twenty ninth, so we really make the most of our time.
Thank you, Will.
Thanks.
Kevin, except, yes, Kevin, but your thing's over there. Okay, that was confusing. Hi, Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor and Councillors. Um, we're joined tonight by Kerry Brennicky of the consulting firm MIG. Who's been leading the code update project with her caller colleague Matt Hasty. Matt's double booked tonight. He may join us remotely a little bit later. Um, for tonight's work session, you'll find a cover sheet beginning on page one hundred and eighteen of your main packet and draft code in packet number three. Uh, this material focuses on zoning regulations and special use standards, and fifteen issues have been identified in the cover sheet um for discussion tonight. Each of these highlighted issues um were reviewed by the Planning Commission and we did our best to summarize their feedback. And that, uh, that meeting course was held just a a week ago tonight. Kerry has had a very difficult task. Uh, synthesizing Oregon's model code for small cities with our existing code and integrating recommendations from the code audit project. And I'm going to admit that it can be pretty challenging to review this material without seeing all the other components. Of the development code, but keep in mind, this is going to be combined with code from the other modules that we're working on. And the Planning Commission and City Council uh will hold work sessions to review a consolidated draft of a development code in in early twenty twenty six. Um, tonight, we'd like to provide a a quick refresher on where we are in the overall process. We'll review and discuss module three, the draft code materials that you have. Um, any other questions from council we'd like to respond to? And of course, we'll discuss next steps. I should mention that the first phase of the project, the code audit, included a fair amount of public engagement. And the code audit is being used um in the initial drafts of the code that is being prepared now. Um, and now that we do have some draft code available for people to respond to, we do expect to start really ramping up public engagement. Uh, for the code update. Draft code for modules one through three is posted on the project website. Our first video is now hosted on the city's YouTube page and linked through the project website. It it explains what the development code is and how it affects people in the community. Um, interested parties are welcome to provide feedback through a portal on the project website. They can keyword search if they haven't found the page yet. Hood River Code Update and uh scroll down to the bottom of the page to find the portal. Unless there are any questions from me at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Kerry, who's got a PowerPoint for you.
Yeah, okay. Carry on.
Great, thank you.
So, thanks for having us, Council and Mayor. Um, this is the third edition of the. Third module of the code update you were hearing about, so let's get started. Dance this here. Okay, agenda. On our agenda, we have the status report of the module Oregon.
Sorry, we're not, we're not seeing that.
And, and, and look at the right screen.
Dustin.
How many planners does it take to uh to do this?
Sweet one.
Voila.
Thank you, Dustin.
Great.
So on the agenda, first we have the status report. We'll talk about the module organization recap, the module three topics, topics and sources, items for discussion and next steps. There are quite a few items of discussion. We have narrowed it down, provided staff recommendations for your guidance. Um, here is the overall code update and audit phase schedule. We are rolling along with our council presentation for session three. And we are beginning to draft module four. The code updates are in four modules. The first we've given to is the introduction and general provisions. The second one is the application procedures and land divisions. And we are now on the third, which is the zoning regulations and special use standards. And being drafted as we speak is the community design and land division standards. So a quick review, module one elements, they're up on the screen here. Um, you had a work session on those. And so the, the planning commission, those are being um updated with your feedback and staff at feedback at the moment. Um, the module two elements, the city council also had a work session on these. And they were uh the application types and processes, design review, land divisions, conditional use permits. Modifications to approve plans, um how do amendments to the zoning map, adjustments and variances. Planning and developments and historical preservation and procedures. So you have reviewed those, provided feedback. Um, we got some notes from the planning commission and we have a lot of notes from staff, so those are being updated as we speak as well. Module three is what we're on now. These are your basic zoning chapters. So it's the purpose and classification of the land use zones in the city of Hood River. Um, the allowed uses by zone have been put into a table. The lot and development standards by zone have been put into tables. Um, the land use zone regulations that has to um. Kind of how you read different parts of land use now specifics. Um, special use standards, several very exciting ones are new to your code and the overlay zones. Um, as Dustin was saying and Kevin were saying, um lots of us going into this, we're starting with the state model code for small cities as the. Template, basically. And that is currently being updated. Uh, my colleagues are heading that up. For incorporating all the state statutes and clearing objective standards. So both projects are running side by side, so we are informing each other. Um, the existing Hood River code is also part of um the information we are using. We're also using recent code updates that have been blessed by the state. And seem to be working. Um, Sandy's an example. Bend, um Fairview, there are several of them. We're also doing state legislation and Oregon revised statutes. That's a lot of reading, but all those things we have to do, we are incorporating into the code. And then we are, um, the project team, we met with Dustin and Co- Kevin bi weekly and have had a lot of discussion of these items. Those are the sources. So the key issues that are going to be, our discussion questions are revolving around our allowed uses, development standards, our new provisions. Um, things that weren't in your code before, such as affordable housing, wireless communication facilities and. Temporary uses, other items such as those, and overall the reorganization of the zoning regulations. So we'll start with, we have gone through and Kevin and Dustin and pulled out. Bigger issues that they need policy guidance on, and they also have recommendations um from us and them. That are presented in these discussion items to help guide the discussion a little more and not to. Leave it so open ended that we're talking for hours on one topic, which is easy to do. I have moved question one to the end because it is meaty. And uh, we're going to start with question two because the planning commission discussed, I think forty minutes, the first question, and. We want to get through this, given the hour. So if you look in the code. Um, this is a big reorganization of what, how the code is structured now. Our code right now has a chapter for each of the land use zones, and then each of the zones, it has the allowed uses, the conditional uses, allowed uses by uh. I think all design review or development review and um any other kind of special standards that apply. This takes that all and puts it into tables. So you're going to see one table that has all the zones. With a key that shows you what, where an allowed use is, where it's a conditional use. And um it's broken down from residential, commercial and industrial. So, and then there are other tables that have the lot and development standards. So we want to point out that it is a departure from how the code looks now. The model code is used in lots of cities throughout Oregon. And it's more visual, so it tends to be a um. A workable way to do it. Um. What we want to ask you is. The PC Commission supported incorporating the use table in the development code. Um, Commissioner shared recommendations for verifications and refinements. Um, items such as um the commercial uses aren't very broken down in your current code. It's just. Commercial use, office use. Um, most other codes break the commercial uses down. And um, we would. Work together with us, Dustin and Kevin, to expand the use table. But we wanted to ask you all, do you agree with the planning commission that we're okay doing the departure from the text and the chapters to a table?
I keep hoping you're going to show me a table.
Give page numbers.
Or an example of a table that's being used elsewhere.
To be on page uh sixteen to twenty six of the packet. Of what a table would look like.
I have a table now on Doug's like that, thanks.
May I ask a question, Mayor?
I know.
Is this a formatting question or a policy question?
It's, it's a question of ours. Is the city okay taking a new format to their code? It is. It is a different way of structuring a development code. Looking at the table, does it make sense to you or do you have? Thoughts or opinions on how it could be done differently?
Main, I think the point is to make the code easier to understand, more accessible, and this is probably a whole lot better than a. Ton of text. I mean, I thought it was pretty easy to understand personally.
Yeah, I'm all for the policy of making it easier, so yes. Yeah, I'm all for the policy of making it easier, so yes.
Would there? I want to highlight something that was really important that Kevin spoke to earlier, the video piece. So in the long run, would there be some sort of audio walking folks how to read this table?
Uh not a part of this project, but certainly if you wanted to expand your tools outside of the code. Sorry, I'm standing up, trying to take it, take it easy on Jen. Uh that could be something that would. That you could do. It's not necessarily the substance of the code, but. There's nothing, I don't think putting in a table will help, would prevent that.
Alright, we all agreed on.
I think we're okay on the table.
Alright, oh good on the table. Okay, allowed uses in the R three zone, this is a very specific one that has come up a lot in Hood River. And Dustin Kevin wanted to bring it to your attention. Um the lot, the model code allows commercial uses in the R three zone as a conditional use. In order to avoid erosion and the limited amount of land in the R three, which is needed for multifamily and other residential development. Staff does not recommend the induction introduction of commercial uses through a conditional use process in the R three zone. However, there may be locations where commercial and mixed-use neighborhood scale development are desirable. Outside of the commercial zones. Such as near intersections, collectors and arterial streets. So.
I'm gonna cut in. My computer screen has a number three which kind of said what you just said. My packet has just what you just said. Where should I put my eyes?
Put it on the packet, right? The.
Yep.
The computer screen is the uh, or they look at the presentation?
Yeah, you're uh you should, you should review the packet and the council cover page.
Thank you.
This is on the council cover page. Um so the big overarching question here is. In the R three zone, that's your higher density residential, do you want to consider allowing commercial uses? The planning commission agreed that standalone commercial usage should not be listed as a conditional use in the R three zone. However, the commission supported mixed-use residential commercial development in the R three zone. With limits on how much commercial could occur in those developments. I also want to point out, as soon as we allow residential with commercial, you have to go to a type one clear and objective process. So it cannot be a conditional use, so it would have to be allowed by rights. Um so we want to get the council's um opinion if commercial should be allowed in the R three zone. By conditional use.
I want to understand.
Yeah.
You're asking, should commercial be listed as conditional? Do you mean? Never versus conditional or always versus conditional?
So it would uh you can not allow it. Uh you could allow it through a conditional use process, which has a whole lot of criteria about compatibility, you know. You know, maybe a big effect to the community.
Yeah.
Or you could strictly allow it. They did not want to allow just residential as a conditional use. They wanted to explore allowing mixed-use projects of residential and commercial in the R three zone.
To be clear, they did not recommend conditional uses. For commercial use in the high-density residential, to not allow that. So you you had resi- you said residential. But they did, but they did say they would be willing to entertain or that we should entertain some sort of mixed-use provision.
I have the same exact question, Dustin. They did not recommend it as a conditional use.
As a, as commercial uses a standalone, so exclusively commercial. They did not recommend, correct?
Because they did not wish it to be conditional because they wished it to be permitted or excluded.
Excluded.
Thank you. Not even as a condition.
Not even as conditional.
Is mixed use allowed in C one then or C two? Like can you, you can have multifamily housing in a C two zone with commercial? How do you, how do we accommodate mixed use now, or do we?
Exclusively in your commercial zone, so not in the office residential note, which is known as C one. Only in the general commercial zone as C two.
Grant. I'll just voice an opinion. In the R three zone residential explicitly, I'm not in favor of having a commercial. Use in explicitly residential zones. Uh if hypothetically somebody wanted to introduce a commercial use into a residential zone. Uh I would be more interested in uh having a different zone. Um for that, some kind of mixed zone um that isn't available to us now uh in our current hierarchy. Uh but in something that is just R three, I would not be in favor of allowing any commercial in there, including conditional.
Thank you, Grant. Amanda?
I feel like from what I'm understanding, I like the mixed use idea because there could be a great opportunity to have like, oh sorry. Um you know, high-density resident uh residential with like a coffee shop. Or some gathering place for the community of people who live there, so I am in favor of allowing that sort of. Development, I guess, and I think that's what this is saying.
Thank you, Amanda. I agree with Amanda. I like the idea that it is possible to have a mixed-use development in the R three zone. Doug?
Yeah, same. Um you mentioned before. You know, specifically where in R three lies, you know, in a major arterial, et cetera, you know. What's, what's the best way to think of it that way? Um. Is it like Grant said, there's a R four or something that's created to account for that? I mean. Um I think that the way the R threes are laid out now, sometimes that makes sense to have a mixed use, sometimes it doesn't. It's kind of. How is, how is it best handled on a, you know, a case-by-case basis with conditional use, you know? Um. I don't know if it's, if you can account for that ad hocness for, for location or not, you know what I mean?
Uh just to clarify that uh you can prescribe some time, place and manner instances. Uh which uh allow for unique circumstances within that zone. So there uh we can narrow it to, although they, they become permitted uses when you introduce needed housing. There is an opportunity for us to set under what conditions would you think about it? Intersections, collectors, arterials, so it doesn't necessarily have to be exclusively dialed into the zone at large. Um but we can get into that. But what we don't want to do is spend time and energy and our, our consultant's time, if this is something that is. Not of interest to you whatsoever, like I, I will pass. However, if there's, it sounds like there's some appetite under certain circumstances to consider this, either through. Uh allowing a mixed use in high-density or in your high-density residential. We would probably apply some of that to the C one zone, which is uh it's essentially R three plus office use. There would be circumstances in which we could do this. As long as there's four of you who are interested in, in seeing that we can expand this and, and make it a more nuanced conversation. But we're not going to make it a nuanced conversation if on its face you find it unacceptable.
Thank you, that's helpful.
So some codes, like other communities have code where you actually have a mixed-use zone, like. So we have residential, we have commercial, we have industrial. Is there, is there's potential for a category that is mixed use that is separate than this, right? You wouldn't necessarily, do, do we have to have it be like R three allows mixed use? Or can we create like Doug was saying, like create a separate, if it, if you call it R four or whatever, or it's just mixed use? Is that correct?
You, you could, and then you're going to go around starting to remap start parts of the city.
Yeah, that's the thing, it'd be so spotty of where you want these zones. At the corners of collectors and arterials that creating a map of new zone would be challenging. What you can do is we can put in very specific design standards on corner lots on these streets. The buildings need to look like this if they incorporate commercial. They need to have windows facing this way, they need to have doorways facing out. They can only be, the commercial element can be so big in the development, and we can prescribe those things.
Part, and part of the scope is not to remap the city. So you absolutely could go back, that could be the approach, however, that's not. That's not the approach here to start remapping parts of the city and zone amendments, well.
Yeah, to that point, one of the thing, the things I've kind of struggled with throughout this process is. Sticking to what I think the scope of this is, and it's listed in here. The purpose of this project is not to amend comprehensive plan policy issues, but to improve the usability of the code. Update the standards to be easier to understand and apply, address issues of ambiguity and ensure consistency with state law. And regardless of opinions about that, I personally feel like. This question kind of goes beyond that, and I kind of. Personally, don't feel terribly comfortable diving into that discussion as part of this. Cause it, to me, it seems like it's kind of beyond the scope of that. Like, if we want to have a conversation about that, like, I don't know that. I mean, I understand why it's happening, but I don't know if this is necessarily the correct. Uh vehicle to be doing that in, given what's the parameters of this project. I don't know how other people feel about it. I also, you know, I can dissuade people if they want to go that route, but I just kind of am struggling with that a little bit.
Amanda?
I can see what you're saying, but I also think Dustin is just saying like, are you open to this? Should we keep moving forward, not let's dive into it? We don't want to dive into it if that's not something you want to consider, so. I think a simple yes, we like it or no, we don't, it's enough.
Uh to help allay some of those scope fears, um one of, and it's easy to go a bunch of different routes. So I absolutely thank you for being mindful of, of the lane. However, um going back to the scope to help this question. One of the issues that was brought to us from council was the ask of to look at R three. And this is going to come up later in of our fifteen points is, why are we not seeing multifamily development in R three? And why is there a shift to uh in the marketplace trying to move their, their developments to C two? And to start giving a critical look at that, because your R three is not producing multifamily housing right now. It is a trend towards C two. And so there was an ask from council in the early scope to say, please look at that as a part of the response of why? Why do we have this and what can we do to omit that obstacle? So this one has a particular nuance of, of why back in the original scope of scoping of the project. So we're, I think we're, we're safely in scope on this question.
And I'd also add that ultimately it's how do we ensure that there's more housing, you know, of all types. But especially affordable housing.
So Justin, I think said, are there four of us that are interested in exploring mixed use in R three? Yes.
Next point.
Next point. Okay, so this is one pulled out as problematic by Kevin and Dustin in the current code as well. A conditional use permit for development on, for commercial development. Uh on sites of one point five acres and greater in the C two zone. So right now, if you have a site, that's one point five acres, which is your typical fast food drive-through. Um you need to get a conditional use. Um Dustin and Kevin and um and their experience in other places that one point five acres is too small. There, most sites are developed at that and that for something to be considered a conditional use. Uh sites three acres would be more appropriate and it'd still be subject to site plan review. The planning commission supported increasing the threshold for conditional use permit for commercial development in the C two zone. From one point five acres to three acres, we would like to see a council's opinion.
I'm okay with that. Four thumbs.
I have a question.
Anna has a question.
Sorry.
On this number four, it says that, that the handouts, the staff recommends reconsidering the threshold based on impacts of proposed development. Rather than focusing solely on site size, uh based on impacts, that's the same as performance-based standards, right? So that's kind of subjective, and again, going back to what Ben reminded us is the purpose of this is we're looking to make things clear and objective. Can this be um? Can this ask be accomplished objectively and not subjectively?
Yes, so it, the sites between one point five acres and three acres, which is a lot, will now be just subject to the site design standards. You don't want to have to go through the conditional use criteria, which is clear and more objective. So I think you are increasing clear and objectivity by upping the threshold, if that's your question.
I, I feel like the, the way this is worded is kind of confusing because it says. You still have to go through a conditional use process and then um there is a site, the site plan review too, but I'm, I'm. I guess I'm also kind of confusing in here type one and type two, like conditional use permit is what, a type two or type three?
Is a type three mandatory hearing.
So, and that's planning commission involvement, right? And is that based on clear and objective standards or is that, is, does that kind of, that's quasi-judicial? So it's kind of subjective to based on, on whatever is being proposed, correct?
Not just based on what is proposed, on standards within the code that are not necessarily required to be clear and objective. So once you go to conditional use approval for commercial uses, you can apply non. Non-standards that are not clear and objective, compatibility, consistency. General statements such as that that aren't, call it mathematically determinable, um are eligible conversations. Then, and they're eligible standards. However, it's not just the standard of whatever you want. It is a standard that we have in the code that does not have to be clear or objective.
This great.
Uh perhaps I can ask this question a different way. Um. Three is a number just as much as one point five is a number. Uh we are just increasing the size of that number. Uh we are not necessarily asking to evaluate a site based on the intensity of use of said site. Intensity per acre, let's say, of that site. Would that be a more apt measurement in terms of a conditional use application?
In. This would only be our opinion, but I think, you know, certainly I have discretion currently now to take a use. Or a development application that is not triggered by uh as a conditional use and make it a type three standard. Uh if I see that that development has enough intensity or impact um to, to warrant it. And that's based on staff's opinion, based on the amount of traffic, based on neighborhood impact, interest, we can do that. I, I think some of the issues that we see with this code is a site that's one point five acres is a single use. Site, it's not built out in phases, and really the size of the site has typically little impact, especially at this size. On, on whether it's conditional use or not. You can have a small site that has a large impact. Um you can have a large site. I could have a five-acre site with a single dwelling on it. And because of its size of the site, that is automatically a public hearing. And I think that's a, it's not necessarily the best match for utility, time and attention. And time for the planning commission discretionary standards. And so our, our recommendation is to move away from a one point five acre to something that will likely be done in phases. It is lar- largely a greenfield site and may have a greater impact. So I could have a, yeah, a duplex on a three-acre site and it's a public hearing. Or I could have a duplex on a one point five acre site.
Dustin gave us that information earlier.
Yeah, as you move to the west, um you have in excess of a dozen three-acre sites. Most of them coming for annexation, mostly on the west side. One point five acres starts to become much smaller. Um for example, a stopper restaurant is over at one point five acres. That's a single restaurant. Um it's not necessarily public here, something that we, we see as the mass community demand and public hearing worthy. Hence the recommendation to, to raise the bar. So that when public interest comes and planning commissions involve that, that we have something of larger magnitude. Again, the code works, even if you have it, it is completely up to you whether you want to elevate it.
Something comes in, in an out burger, which is not quite three acres, Dustin, you go, oh, hold on, this is a good. This is a good, be a big impact to the community for traffic. He can elevate it to a type three.
We got, we got four thumbs for this. We like number four.
All right.
Okay to move on? Food cart pods.
Food cart pods. Currently, you don't have any standards for food cart pods or have it described as a use in the code at all. It's sort of a grip. There's, doesn't, isn't addressed.
And does that mean it can't happen or it always happens?
It, it means it's a commercial use, same as all of them. So it doesn't have any tailored standards to it. It would be managed just the same as you were to build a, a safe way.
Seems like we want to not have that.
The, I think the idea in the request would be to tailor standards that are more useful in evaluating the merits of a food cart pod.
Staff recommends special standards for, for food cart pods and mobile food vendors. And they should be permitted in the C two zone, subject to these standards. The planning commission supported adopting standards for the development of the food cart pods in the C two zone. They also supported, supported continuing allowing transient merchant license for food carts outside of pods and not limiting to the C two zone. So that's more the taco truck that visits industrial areas.
Okay, so those two pretty different things, Godis.
So with this one, Dustin, a while back, we heard from many food cart vendors and owners around the challenges that they were having and being able to move. Were those owners? What, did you, anyone seek their input around what this could potentially do to them?
This actually doesn't change that. So when we evaluated the food cart pod and transient merchant license before, we set aside, we actually put a ceiling on it that, that transient merchant license would still exist and still be allowed if you had four or less carts on, on a site. If you have more than that currently today, you go through the land use application process, this wouldn't change that. This is only a recommendation to develop specific rules for those going through the land use process. So it doesn't change the, that three or four or less still are transient merchants that live outside the process. It just provides those that go through the process, unique rules, rather than a generic rule set that applies to any commercial development that we see. So we think a good rule set is, and I'd love to have special standards for all of them, but I think this is a particular use that is much different than your typical. So it wouldn't impact the transient merchant folks and those that have licensed that are currently operating now.
It wouldn't make it more challenging. I guess that's what I'm trying to.
If you had three or four, for a transient merchant, it wouldn't impact them at all. If you wanted to develop a food cart pod, a freestanding commercial use that was there permanently and had more than five sites. Can't say whether it would make it more challenging. It would be written to where the rules were specific to the use. So depends on whether it fits you or not. I wouldn't say it was more challenging. It would be more tailored.
How do you feel about this? Amanda, go ahead.
Um, I feel good. I liked that, but I also am just a little confused. You're saying it's not going to affect transient merchants, which I'm assuming are the trucks that maybe go home at night or park somewhere during the day and then leave. And then, so why is why, I guess, like, how does that fit in with this part of not limiting to carts to C two zones? Like, are they, are transient merchants now limited to that or?
They're not. They're not, transient merchants now are not. They're not subject to the similar regs. They're allowed in all the non residential. So they could be at the industrial sites. They can be at light industrial under the temporary merchant. They can be in the commercial, but they can't be in the residential areas.
So if you want to have a party and you want to rent a taco truck down at your house?
No, this is like a transient merchant for like, that is issued through the city for the purposes of a year. That is, that is more stable. That, that is a, it's not a use that goes by day. That is a use that typically sits in one site for six months to a year.
Taco truck for a party is not transient.
Okay. I guess I'm just confused, like, why this is a part of it if that's not the way it is now. What's not being hit with that, I guess, is right?
Well, we can also rename this to food cart pods and take out the mobile food vendors, which probably would clarify it as and it'll come up definitions of what a food cart pod is, what a difference between a transient food vendor and what a permanent cart is. And just like this is, and not letting cars in the C two zone, but they're not limited to that now. So.
Right, does, that doesn't change. So we still wouldn't limit the transient merchants. This has no impact of doing that. It just has to do with a full freestanding commercial use fixed in the commercial zone.
Pods, pro pods.
Pro pods, and there are several, several good examples because these are, this is an issue all over Oregon. Cities are grappling with, a lot of them have gone through it, Bend and Troutdale. Have you been to their food cart pod?
Troutdale's food cart pod is astonishingly extensive.
Yes, and those have very, very prescribe special use standards for their, how their pods must be developed.
All right, maximum, oh, sorry.
Really quick, so for those that are tuning in and listening to this discussion, number five makes it clear so that we're eventually replicating what Troutdale has?
We're starting off with that as the model.
Okay.
It's, it's going to be customized for the City Hood River. We just wanted to make sure this is not in your code and this is something you would like to add to your code.
Six.
Number six. Right, this one's very technical. I apologize. This is talking about maximum lot coverage. And that is there, how much of your lot can have development on it? And the definition of what lot coverage varies by jurisdiction. And also varies between the model code and what the Hood River code has. So the model code includes a standard for lot coverage. But staff recommends retaining the city's maximum lot coverage standard. Both of them are in the packet on page thirty seven to forty. So staff says, let's keep what we currently have and not use the model code. However, staff does recommend incorporating some provisions of the model code to improve clarity on how lot coverage is calculated. Lot coverage in the City Hood River currently includes the driveways, the parking and the building. And I'm not sure about the walkways. The model, the model code does not include driveways. So.
And applies to commercial use. So you can clarify, Dustin.
That's, that's correct. Recommendation is we continue to work with our code and provide some enhancements and clarity to help from some of the things from the model code to help improve, how do we clearly evaluate lot coverage?
That sounds like a good point.
Yep.
Others?
These three agrees.
We got four on that.
All right. Next up is building height transition. The model code, code includes building height transition standards that are, which applies to limit height and new development adjacent to existing single story residential uses and residential zones to improve compatibility. It is unclear how to staff, how development application can provide the necessary details to, for existing development on sites under different ownership. So you're kind of having your plan you submit to the city, taking into account what's next to you is really hard for applicants to do. It's hard for staff to evaluate. Staff anticipates and recommends improvements to the definition of building height and discussion of appropriate maximum building height standards in the zoning districts. But staff recommends tabling the building height transition standards until building height is addressed. So they do not recommend applying this height transition standards in the code. On the screen is an example of a simplified version of it and fair view of what a building height transition standard would look like. Staff's not recommended this being added to the code at this time.
I think this picture is telling me that the blue house is a little bit shorter because the house next to it is quite short.
And it needs to be separated and step back where the peak of the height is, yes.
And it doesn't ever get to thirty five.
No.
Because the guy next door is short.
And it would have to, it would have to be moved over and increase the site setback because the guy next to it is shorter, yes.
What part of the code, where, where does the definition of building height get rechanged? What, what part of the code is that in?
That's going to be in the definitions.
And that'll be in what, what section?
Right now, it's number seventeen.
One oh six oh.
And you guys haven't changed that definition yet, maybe for and then you'll not come back.
Yes.
We'll work on definitely clarifying how to measure building height.
And the planning commission had an opinion.
Yes, they recommended the not adopting the building height transition standards.
Did they say why?
They didn't want to add complexity, more complex standards that are hard to administer.
I agree with the planning commission's recommendation.
We got four thumbs on play. Okay, we're with the PC.
All right, affordable housing code. This is a bigger philosophical question. The city's affordable housing strategy recommends adoption of affordable housing ordinance to expedite the review and approval of affordable housing development subject to clear and objective development standards tailored to meet the needs and impacts of affordable housing. So that goal is also supported by the state. So a lot of this has been done through state mandates already. The consulting team, me, I draft, I took all the state mandates for affordable housing and I drafted code provisions to address all the recently updated statutes. So they are, everything you have to do for affordable housing is in that new affordable housing section. Pretty much verbatim by state statute, so we don't get off track. Staff anticipates further refinement to the affordable housing code provisions and requests the the planning commission and the city council input on methods to improve the development and review of affordable housing. What we want to say is this is, what's in there is what you have to do. The planning commission, and we're asking you, do you want to expand on the affordable housing policy and ordinance? Do you want to give bonuses? Allow for greater flexibility for affordable housing than what you absolutely have to do?
Well, well asked. Godis has thumbs. Yeah, we, yes, we want that. Godis has a question.
Thank you. So I'm wondering, in addition to this, the effectiveness of our current middle housing code strategy? Are there pieces from there that this would potentially augment to add more affordable housing overall?
It could. They could play, they could blend. There would also be parts of affordable housing code that would be they would be different because, you know, the, the middle housing code is essentially an expectation of market rate. Affordable housing would be more of a non-market rate and do you provide some sort of procedural advantage? Development advantage or some privileges that well, the state is, has already done that. So you will, because you are required to. Are there other things that you want to consider beyond what the state mandate is? So it's something we could look at.
Parking minimums could be adjusted for affordable housing. Height limits could be given adjusted for affordable housing.
Maybe the performance or design standards.
If it's affordable housing that we could add.
And more incentives and release from regulatory barriers. The state does a lot. Everything has to be clear and objective, type one allowable by rights. Basically for the affordable housing, but we could work for our local standards to reduce more barriers.
It seems consistent with our, with our adopted goals that we want to do a lot. So PC makes sense. And we got support for that.
We'll work on drafting those. So four thumbs up. Seven, six, nine.
Home occupation.
Home occupation.
Which I first thought meant like somebody was going to steal my house. Which is not fun. Let's not do that.
So right now, the home occupation standards in the code is minimal and suggests using a ministerial process, which is a type one. Just Kevin and Dustin reviewing something that comes in with very discretionary standards. So they have to make a lot of judgment. Staff recommends a type one review process for home occupations that have negligible impact to neighboring properties. And a type two process, which has some discretion and gets noticed for home occupations that have a greater impact to neighboring properties. And this is going to revolve a lot more around traffic, people coming to and from the property. Each approval would have standards for the uses to ensure compliance. And in case of the type two review, the neighbors would be noticed when a home occupation comes in. So for a type one, if you have run an accounting business out of your home and you have no employees or maybe one part time that comes and helps you, type one. If you're running a floral arrangement business and you've got two work vans that gets stored at the property and you've got floral deliveries and you have people delivering flowers from the house, that could be example of a type two process. So for, just to give some examples. So the PC supports implementing type one and type two review procedures for home occupations. But they also want to clarify when you don't need a permit at all. Which is, example was the kids lemonade stand. Or.
We're okay with PC on that. Amanda, go ahead.
This one I feel kind of ambivalent about, but is there like a requirement if I do accounting from my house that I have to tell you guys about that right now?
When you get your business license, it's a home occupation if it's registered to your house.
It, it could result in an issue. Typically, we're not searching out all the accountants and all the Excel spreadsheets, but if your neighbors notice during the month of April that your accounting business all of a sudden has a number of people showing up around April fifteenth at all hours of the night, that could result in a violation. So usually we're, we're not in pursuit of the typical home based business that has no outside appearance. Usually starts to show up when we actually do have issues, but if you have an accounting business, technically you should have a home occupation permit based out of your home.
This isn't remote work. Like, if you work for a company and you just work from home, that's not, that's not a home occupation. That's just where you're doing your work. It's having a business registered to the house where you are the owner and you are doing the business out of it.
So is the PC recommendation more review than than currently exists?
They recommend more opportunities for for different types of review. A review, something that wouldn't require a view, something that would have a basic staff approval and something that would provide a neighborhood notice. Three different types based on kind of some operating conditions.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to say, can you back, go back a slide? Because I think we went forward.
I'm, I'm not clear on this one, but I'm okay with PC for now. I mean.
I mean, I don't really, I feel like this is kind of like we're boarding people's houses, but we do it anyway. Yes, I don't know.
I mean, that's what I'm, what I'm grappling with. Are we unintentionally making it even more challenging?
I, I think what you have now is not lawful or functional. So is it more challenging? What I have is a code that I can enforce because it tells me to do it administratively. It tells me to have people get home occupations. However, it asks me to apply standards that I cannot do without notifying the neighbors. So it tells me to approve it without notifying the neighbors, yet enforce standards that lawfully I cannot interpret without notifying the neighbors. That is a problem. That's, that's a code that's broken. So we like to unbreak it.
And is it required to have home occupation in the code or can we just?
You could, you could remove it. And every time there was a complaint, I would have an issue of saying, I have a commercial operation in a residential zone and now I have a zoning violation. So if you don't allow it, it's going to put us in a position likely to have some ambiguity, whether it's a put us in a position likely to have some ambiguity, whether it's a, is this commercial or not commercial? It's does, it's a customary it's customary part of the code. I wouldn't recommend taking it out because it's going to leave. You're gonna have to resolve it case by case and likely by code enforcement. And we would like to not do that if we can.
This is another example. Someone has a great business that has mobility vans that take people to and from doctor's appointments and handicap. They park them all at a house, like three in the driveway, three on a street that are running their business out of that house. Um, the neighbors call and complain. Would they, would it be good if they went through a process to say what they can and cannot, you know, what the parameters are, running their commercial business out of that house? So this is take cases similar to that.
Feels like we're not really clear on this one. That's what I observed. The thumbs are not popping up.
I, I have to do something. Um, if you, I, I have to do something. Your code is not enforceable. We have a good rec- I think we have a recommendation. You have to vote on it eventually. Um, if you pass now, I will move on.
Let's move on. I observed that we're not quite clear on this. Uh, Doug.
Uh. Let me do a straw poll on that or, or, I mean, I'm ready to put my thumb up.
Okay, who, 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 who's supportive of the PC recommendation on number nine? Thumbs. Two and a half.
Two and a half.
Uh, well.
We got two and a half. We were unclear. We were I wanna move on. We've, we're clear on some of them, not this one.
Can we just get more information?
Yeah.
Not flunking it, just.
I would definitely add this as a, it'd be good to add in the public info, a question when we talk about issues of how to regulate home occupations. So we'll put that on the list. Okay, next one should be a little simpler. Manufactured dwelling park standards. Um, the current standards for manufactured homes and manufactured dwelling parks do not comply with state law and need to be updated. In particular, the manufactured homes that are stamped certified by the state have all the things. They need to be of the same regulations as a stick-built home. And right now in your code, there is a whole bunch of regulations on them that don't apply to stick-built codes. I mean, things like their wheels removed and putting on a foundation and that stuff makes sense, but there's other stuff like they have to have a certain pitched roof. They have to have a carport. We can't do that. So those are being updated. When it comes to the um, manufactured home park, the current uh, code or apply it requires approval by the planning commission, a type three process for um, manufactured dwelling park. So this is the park that that only has the manufactured dwelling homes in it. Staff or refugaments moving it to a type two process for the review of manufactured dwelling parks, including tailored approval standards. So getting very clear standards for how these parks need to look and moving it to a type two process instead of a type three process, which it currently is. The PC feedback is they were okay at being moved to a type two process, still gets noticed. Has clear standards. And then it's a administrative approval. And that um, we will include tailored standards for manufactured dwelling parks for the City Hood River.
Is this for citing a new park?
Yeah, yes.
When's the last time that occurred?
Not since I've been here. I, I don't know. We we've never had one in the, in modern memory. However, your code now needs to be updated to, in case that does become an option.
What does this potentially, or, or what are the potential impacts on the two that we currently have within the city now?
There's no impacts on the ones currently. They are they'd be legally non-conforming, as they probably aren't.
They, if, if there was expansion or modifications, they would likely have a land use process. Um, that wouldn't change because if we have modifications to legal non-conforming, it would have a land use process. So they're they're already kind of going into that line. Uh, the type two process is consistent with what a subdivision would be. Um, or will be, not what it is today, what it will be. Um, so we really fit it on par with whether it's subdivision, multiple lots, multiple dwellings, manufactured home, multiple non-lots with multiple dwellings. They seem to be fitting and on par.
Um, why, why is staff's recommendation to do this? I mean, because if, if planning commission is uh, made up of representatives from our community. So this is another opportunity for community to weigh in on this a little bit. And now that you said that subdivisions are gonna be similar, that they will also be type two. You know, can you tell me, is it just for the sake of efficiency? Or, you know, why would we not want our planning commission and our community to weigh in on um, developments?
Similar circumstance, similar application. So type two being a subdivision, the manufactured home park being a similar use, if you will, minus the construction standards being matched there. Uh, that recommendation, it has to be clear and objective standards. Um, it's a residential use, so we should be, and again, kind of the council mandate to, it's not a required regulatory process, but it's not, uh, it's not a non-noticed, it's a noticed process. So I think it fits in the middle of having a a conditional use approval not being required, but also uh, out of some balance of that to provide some transparency and notice of such a use. If one starts to be required. I think it's saving conditional use opportunities for something that actually have large impact and merit and require that type of oversight and decision at the, at the planning commission level. Reserving, reserving that those for the most kind of impactful and not a manufactured home park.
So it's reducing the workload on pl- planning commission is the reason why you would recommend?
No, I don't, I'm not worried about the planning commission workload. I think it's more about the venue and opportunity and oversight that becomes important. Not, not necessarily the workload of planning commission. It's using that for the most impactful uses. And policy and discretionary where this is not a discretionary standard. There's no discretionary standards that will be allowed here. So having a body to evaluate it in a discretionary way is, is maybe less important.
Support from my left here. Yep, we got four. Temporary uses.
Temporary uses. Also currently not in the develop, not in your code. Provisions for temporary uses have been added based on the model code. Um, temporary uses are items such as seasonal markets. And when people are running, um, a use that isn't permanent, but should have some parameters on it for time, place and manner. Um, hours of operation, traffic flow, that sort of thing. The commission generally supported including code provisions for temporary uses. However, like home occupations, they wanted to make sure we clarify when a permit is not required, such as a kid's lemonade stand. You pop up a lemonade stand on a corner, no, they don't need to get a permit. But if someone runs a Christmas tree farm on a lot, yes, they would need a permit for a temporary use.
Seems fine to me. Yep, we're fine. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Uh, one, one note about this that I had was the only thing about a temporary use is if council agrees, that we treat it as an actual temporary use. It has a defined timeline. It's not renewable in perpetuity. It doesn't just be an open-ended temporary use. So I would, I would hope that we have some defined scope of time on a temporary use as opposed to uncommitted and
There's definitely a
Good.
Times, it, it could be, I think, six months or a year of what the code says. It's temporary uses kind of standard out of the model code that's used across cities.
Part of the benefit of a permit is you have a time date stamp, permit issued on this date. It, it sets a baseline for a number. So rather than it just being floating out there and we never, when did this thing materialize? We have no idea.
They use to keep her sponsoring a calendar year and for no longer than thirty-sixty days.
Not in the code now. No, no parameters now. So if you have a temporary office, a construction trailer that is just unspoken in, in our current code.
And the model we have in there breaks the temporary uses into three types and you know, model home sales offices are one, seasonal sales are another and it gives time, place and manner for the different types of temporary uses you could have.
Cottage cluster.
Cottage clusters. Okay, so this is a use, gotta call it cottage cluster housing. Cottage clusters are um defined, but in the model code for larger cities in larger cities, they have to allow cottage clusters in all zones that allow single-family detached homes. Um, Hood River isn't required to do it. The thing is, there is very prescribed um, design standards for cottage clusters. And it's a type that most developers know in Oregon. And that produces affordable housing.
More affordable.
More, more affordable housing. Um, it's not guaranteed before a certain amount, but it's a, it's a smaller type of housing. And that developers could come in and understand it if it was in the code and how they could apply it in Hood River. And that these prescribed standards exist and they could bring it here. Then the question is does Hood River want to incorporate this cottage cluster housing model into their code? And um, staff recommends the inclusion of the uh, cottage cluster and development code along with standards tailored for different zoning districts to address dusty setbacks and parking and open space requirements. Um, and the planning commission wanted to expand the number of options for residential uses. And they um, supported adding tailored standards for cottage cluster development and clarifying how these standards differ from the cottage and their current middle housing code.
I got three thumbs on my left and a question on my right, two questions.
We already have, yeah, these, this has been developed in our community under what? Is it just so that we have now have something we can point to? Because I know it would be out of this one made in two of these developments are.
Uh, you developed under the planned unit development process, also developed uh, under your middle housing code. So that this would be this would set aside a new unique rule set for this product on its own.
I think Billy and Joe Sager made these in spite of our code. That's what I think.
We, we mean both middle housing and cottage clusters? Well, then, well, we wanted to make sure we separate your current middle housing. We're gonna change the name to neighborhood scale, housing options and have two unit, three unit, maybe cottage. This cottage cluster is a specific type of housing with specific standards that is you're gonna universal through all the bigger cities of Oregon. So it's different from the housing in your model.
What we
That we call cottage cluster, what you currently have. This is very prescribed standards.
I got support from my left. Can we go? Yep, we're good.
At congregate living facilities. This one's also should be
Gotta do, uh, there was two cottages.
Oh, we are gonna skip the parking right now. We'll cover parking um, in article four.
Congregate.
Congregate living uh, residential uses. So the state statute requires a new type of housing called SRO, single resident occupancy units. So that is any house can look like any house on the outside, but you have to allow um, people to rent the rooms individually and have common kitchen facilities. And it is a use that's gonna be permitted. Um, there's limitations in the R two and R three zones. We can have no less than four, but more, no more than six per lot. Um, in the larger zones, I think you're allowed up to a certain amount. But, so you have to put this in your code. Currently not there. But currently in your code, you have something called group residential that has certain parameters and other congregate living for more assisted living medical that has certain parameters. The question is um, how do we want to define these separately? Or do we just wanna move to having SROs allowed and use the state's definition and parameters? Or do you wanna also consider what's currently in the code for group living facilities? It's a complex question. Maybe uh, Dustin and Kevin can clarify it.
In a world not so distant in the past, um, we uh, you, you found definitions common in the code that referred to single-family dwellings defining what a family was. Uh, and at that time, it was typically um
More than five.
More than five unrelated persons by blood. You know, and, and really some general definitions that are no longer supportable. You also had circumstances which differentiated your singular singular family dwelling from a group residential. So setting circumstances in when it was allowed that unrelated persons and what configuration could unrelated persons live in a house together, um, and that, and that still lives in your code, um, accommodating for group homes, uh, assisted living, congregate care facilities that lives in your code today. We, there are some state regulations on how that can occur, time, place and manner. Um, you have a new regulation now with single room occupancies, basically lockouts. Um, that allow for multi-family dwellings that share congregate kitchens. Uh, the recommendation is must include SROs in your code. And we should differentiate time, place and manner to where we may want to consider group residential, group homes and congregate care as well in your code. So
I do a lot of work in my day job with like mom and pop nursing homes. Which is not a lot like a family living in a home. That's a lot like a commercial facility. I mean, this is a is a different kind of neighbor that has
The mom and pop nursing homes are under a different definition. Those are those are care facilities.
Okay.
So that's, that's somewhere else, move, move somewhere else and go along with the kind of care.
I mean, I get that like in the old days, they had anti-broth laws. Like that's not what we need to do, but the, the, it's not completely beside the point. Like this is a complicated question.
For example, um, you know, Mount Hood Meadows built a group residential home to where it was much like uh, dorm style living. Um, that allowed a single kitchen. That is not your typical residential use. However, it has a special place in our code to where it's a group residential living uh, that provided an opportunity. I think it served that use particularly well for people who may not necessarily have the means to afford their own kitchen, but provided a flexible housing opportunity for seasonal employees. It was not, but it, it happened to be a different use uh, in that zone that was allowed. You have similar uses that would be allowed in residential zones too, under that kind of umbrella, separate from your typical single family.
Cause you're talking about all the medical vans and that. I mean, suddenly having a neighbor with six households in it with six cars, like that's not gonna be a whole lot of fun for the neighborhood.
That is, that's, that's an issue when you put a ceiling on it. So it, it's really up to, it's up to you all. Uh, there are some state mandates that we will follow. Um, but if there's any guidance that you have on time, place and manner of group, group homes.
I was gonna say, if we're getting into how many vehicles people have, then this goes beyond, you know, I'd rather have it for something like that than people with a whole lot of money that have a whole bunch of cars on the street that's happening right now, more and more in this town. So that's my, that was my snarky snort.
Amanda.
Um, so I think I'm reading this as, and maybe if I'm getting it right or wrong, but we just would develop standards for the SROs and get rid of the group things that we have now that kind of cover the situation, but it's not actually the SRO. Is that what this question is saying?
That, that's kind of what the question is saying, but we're not recommending getting rid of everything. Um, when the planning commission reviewed this, they focused pretty heavily on the SRO use and they were willing to adopt code exclusively for that and not address these other types of congregate living situations. I think it would be helpful to have code in place to address the other situations as well. So.
So we're, and we also found that we're going to have shelters. So how would that have to apply? The shelters are a new use, special use standard according to state mandate.
Okay.
So those are gonna be incorporated into the code. Regardless.
Great.
Uh, I agree with staff that uh, these use cases are differentiated enough that they should have their own um separate uh, code.
Yeah, we're good. Wireless.
Wireless communication facilities. This came out in the audit that Hood River does not address wireless communications facilities.
Just be a cell phone tower.
Cell phone towers. Um, and all this, and all the equipment around them. Um, we are suggesting we have standards for cell phone towers and wireless communication facilities. It came out in the audit that it was needed and desired. Um, the PC supports including tailored standards based on best practices. And to address the use of stealth And to address the uses stealth technologies. To meet the requirements for eligible facilities and co-location. So stealth is. We can require them to be on exit on buildings um incorporated into architectural features such as.
To make it look like a tree.
Or make them look like a tree, or they have to be on building setback, so you can't really see them from the street. Um they could go on a steeple of a church that's already existing. But not to have them standalone and not disguised or incorporated into a co-located with another.
So it seems obvious to me, we need to have some rules. What the rules are, I'm not exactly sure, but.
And do you want to acquire them to be stealth? Or do does require height limits in different zones?
What do you guys think?
I like the stealth, like put it on things that are already around or.
Yeah. A lot of first. You got thumbs on stealth.
Yeah, and a lot of the times they could be working, but you don't see them. And that's why it's worse. Um the ones on buildings are those a lot of the times that are setback are the ones that you don't usually see, but the trees, yeah, they're they can stick out. Especially if you put a pine tree in a desert, which I've seen.
Uh I'm sure this will be addressed down the road, but just in case uh in that section, I noticed that there was. Uh multiple uh references to Fairview as opposed to like.
So I grabbed Fairview as a placeholder. Um Ben also has a very good example. The Fairviews did not require the stealth. Uh technology, but because Fairview was somewhat closer by the river or similar size, slightly bigger. I grabbed it and I was I was applying it, so I was familiar with it.
I guess I have kind of a strong feedback. We're a lot different from Fairview.
Yeah.
And I'm not looking to be more like that. So as an example, it serves me poorly.
That there is. We're only gonna bend, but that's like the Fairviews did not have the stealth, so that's why we wanted to make sure we asked you the question.
I mean, they're in the metro and like Fairview-ification, I don't think is high on. Okay, we did fifteen.
All right, but no, no.
Fourteen, we say that that's for last.
We are gonna go.
No, we're fifteen. We said the first of the last.
Yeah, because.
Okay, we're all warmed up.
The planning commission is discussing this in about forty minutes. And this one I am going to leave to your experts, Kevin and Dustin, to lead this one off.
All right, what do we got?
Couple of different issues here. Um. The model code suggests introducing uh maximum and minimum density standards into our residential zones. Right now, we. Kind of define density through minimum lot sizes. And um so it's a a change in approach. And as we were looking at it, we were, we we recognize right now we have a minimum density standard in the general commercial zone when we're gonna do residential in the commercial zone. But not in other uh zoning districts at the moment.
Sorry, I'm gonna, do we like understand minimum density like this is? Never been the way it's been done. This may be what we need to do, but. Minimum density, just.
So introducing some a new tool. Um and. If you had concerns, for example, about people underdeveloping um higher uh an R three zone, putting a single family dwelling instead of an apartment building on a big piece of property in the R three zone. A minimum density standard might push in the direction.
You're not allowed to build a one family house.
You've you could write code like that. In any case, uh model code uses minimum maximum density standards, so we wanted to talk about it and make sure that um there's some level of of understanding before we really get into the code writing of how this would work. And Dustin and I had some hesitation on introducing the minimum density standard outside of our general commercial zone. So that's one of the two issues here. Um the second one is uh kind of how Dustin talked earlier about the underperforming of the R three about. You've heard from some developers who wanted to change zoning to C two in order to develop multifamily. Is there something about the R three zone and the density requirements that's broken? Should we do something different there? So um wanna clarify anything I just said?
Yeah, uh or just continue on uh from our discussion and with planning commission. Um the takeaway was to not implement um density minimum. Uh outside of your current C two zone. So that is very much, that's a very intentional. Comp plan directed minimum that came uh out of your um.
Economic opportunities.
Economic opportunities. You have a finite amount of commercial land. You cannot use it for low density residential.
Yeah, waste it on big houses.
Right. Um so that that came out of the code. We recommend maintaining that. Um however, in your general residential. Uh zones, your R one, R two to not and R three to not implement a density minimum. Um what you will have is um. You you could have impacts on um on the the conforming status, making a bunch of units non-conforming because they are low density and current. Uh it actually, we've seen instances and you've observed instances in the gorge where those density minimums prevented development from happening. Um and resulted in kind of some in some interesting neighborhood conflict to where a developer proposed a development. It wasn't dense enough. The neighbors objected. The the developer had stated, I have to do this much. They will not let me develop less. It resulted in land use cases uh and now there's no development. Um so having some of those, you know, it it can work against you. And it can work against some of your mission for removing obstacles. I think that was one of the planning commission's statements was this actually can introduce an obstacle. Um although we do appreciate some of the the need to to try to move the needle on that, um that was something we didn't recommend. Uh planning commission did recommend as it came as for multifamily to step away from the lot size minimum and start to introduce a performance. Uh for multifamily and art R three. So rather than saying. Uh that here's a density ceiling to to require developments to incorporate landscaping, satisfy the parking. Respect the height requirement and do the design standards. Rather than rely on density standards in your R three zone for multifamily. And that was a direct response to this question that we brought up earlier. Why is R three? Not produce the residential that maybe has been expected? And why do you see a shift in a rezone to C two? And some of the questions, and it really involves some of the density requirements. Um the density ceiling on R three limits its development potential as compared to C two, which has no density ceiling. It has only density minimums and 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 that's you see the shift. You see your. The last, I think, four multifamily projects within the city were all proposed in C two. Uh with. Yeah, um except you're one affordable housing that took advantage of affordable housing density bonuses. Um and you see people zoning into the commercial zones to allow for multifamily to be developed. So our recommendation being. Be mindful of the ceiling. Um and R three, the planning commission's recommendation was to allow a different standard, not a density standard for R three multifamily.
I don't understand how putting it on a shrubs is gonna get us a lot of front doors.
Uh by focusing on shrubs and not on the number of units that are built there.
Right now, if you if you came in with a development application for apartments. On an acre of land, we'd do some math real quick. We would factor out the first five thousand square feet. There are two units. We divide the remainder by fifteen hundred square feet. That would give us our total maximum number of units. Planning commission said. Is that really important to look at that minimum lot size number to determine how many units you can get on that site? Should you instead focus on the form, the the height of the building, the parking? And the design and the landscaping and and just stick with those standards and allow the developer to be a little more creative on the number of units they can achieve. Than to um start with a maximum.
And and some of which is already required. You have a minimum landscape requirement across your multifamily, regardless of the the number of units.
We appear with the D two, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Yeah, I was just gonna say I support things that we need to get more out of it. So I think that's what I'm hearing this.
We're prepared to, yeah, recommendation.
We'll explore it.
I just think you'd go crazy if you have minimum density.
That was not a record. That was not a, that was not a recommendation.
Yeah.
That we're not going to explore.
Okay. That's that's important and amazing. Like that giant house between Lincoln and Wasco, like. No, really?
Maybe twenty twenty seven work plan. You can uh circle back to that.
Okay, where are we?
I hope we're good. Okay, so we're done with the questions. Thanks for the discussion items and the discussion. I know it's late and you've been here a while. Appreciate your your time and it's a, this is a iterative process, so it's all gonna come back, but. The bigger questions of what to include and what not to include and really helps us guide this process forward.
Yeah.
Maybe when you'll come back, I love your shirt slider.
Probably November. Um we will try to be mindful of the holidays. Uh however. Uh you've gone from, I believe, a thirty page module to a sixty page module to a hundred and sixty eight page module. And I expect the next one to be just as. Comprehensive as this one. Uh so we we need some time to review it. We need some time for drafting. Uh you need some time to review it. That pushes us well into November without a date certain yet, but I think we have some up next to um.
Yeah, the next one is the more community design standards where we get into parking and landscaping and access and circulation and tree preservation and all that fun stuff. Well, as planners think it's fun.
Okay.
Okay, so next up is uh we're updating modules.
Yeah. Just what one uh uh you're wrapping it up. I just one question to be sure. So. I I asked for clarification from Dustin and Abigail on this, but um this you are, you guys are putting together this draft, so and. Planning commission looked at it. We're looking at it so that we have something to present to the community so they can provide their feedback on this. This isn't, this is just the the draft, right? Because the the piece that's missing is the public. I mean, I know that, and thank you, Kevin, for reminding us that, you know, before I was on on council, um there was a big public input. Process that took place during the audit phase, but it's also important that the public has an opportunity to provide input on this. So just. Just confirming and I I've asked this question and I I'm hoping that we can just confirm it again. Uh public input opportunity is still coming.
Yes, and it's, we wanted to get the bones together. I mean, we gotta put all the meat in. But we're also, when we discuss it with you guys, you'll tell us what's important to bring out to the community.
Okay.
To get these answers, but I mean, the devil's gonna be in the details, not so much the structure of it. So that's where uh we are. I could talk about the public involvement next, but you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. Will it look similar to the ICE community education, for example?
No.
It's robust.
No, we definitely don't have uh the public facing workshop that was scoped uh when we went through. That was, that was one thing that was not. Really seen, since the project is so. Kind of ethereal, you know, it's code, it's regulation, it lives out there. It's not like this tactile project where it's, I like this. The public workshop really doesn't serve the, like, you're gonna look at a bunch of words on the wall and there's no, there's no good button exercise where you put the stickers on and you like or don't like. Um it's a different approach with uh short surveys with videos that are coming online to say, what is a development code? Uh we will go back to our interested party groups that help inform some of the issues that they've seen, um including some of our direct outreach with the next door. We will circle back with those folks to say, we heard your issues, we built some of the code. This is what it looks like. This is how your input was incorporated into where we are now. What? What now? What what do you think? What are you seeing? What are the issues? Have they materialized? How would you like to see them more informed? So we do have the engagement uh strategy that was input. Right now, we're really in the informational stage, meaning sharing information, not really looking for. That full direct feedback, although it's it's always an opportunity for people to reach us. Moving, once we have something for folks to respond to again. Uh we're gonna see more of these interested parties and call it engagement, more of the back and forth.
And also, we, some of the stuff we have to do regardless. So we wanna make sure we pull out what's where we have discretion for the interested parties. And that's getting the bones of this code together is important before we bring it out in front of them, so they have something really specific to review. But there's always always opportunity for flexibility and change. So next up, we are updating modules one through three with Dustin, Kevin's comments, planning commission feedback and council feedback. Um and making the revisions where we can. There's still gonna be a lot of questions and we're gonna put all in one format, so it makes it easier to look at. And that's in progress. Uh looks like video one has been distributed. Um in English and in Spanish, and video one really is explaining the development code and what we're doing to the development code. And as most layperson and graphic terms as we could.
Keep going, please. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I'm I'm happy to ask your question after you're done. I just wanted to make it clear like I have a question.
All right, and we are drafting code module four. And we are gonna organize and conduct the interested party meetings. Um based off most of the list of the people that helped us with the audits, but really talking to developers, really talking to people involved in the community. And engaging the Spanish speaking community as well. And we're also gonna be sending out brief questionnaires or surveys on these specific questions. Uh to folks via the portal.
Can you help me understand the video that exists now? When we talk about this again in November, will we also see the number of users and how effective that bill was? And sort of elements that need to be made to it? Like, was that successful?
I think we we should be able to bring back some statistics of um clicks. I don't know how much more we will have beyond number of clicks, but we anticipate additional videos. To respond to issues that come up during the the discussion with the public. So this was. You know, foundational, this is what we're up to, and uh we have not scoped the remaining videos for content.
The current video that's available, how are you sharing that with?
Right now, shared exclusively through the project website. Um I I would distribute. We haven't really distributed it. We haven't pushed it. Um uh Jackie's got it posted up on the U city's YouTube page, and so probably some social media push. There's there's some work to be done to get it out.
It was posted today. This, I will not get started and we'll make sure that you all will see the video. Please video, please view it. It actually does a very good job explaining what development code is compared to building code or other codes out there. So hopefully you find it informative as well. That is all I have for you after these things. Does anyone have any overall questions?
This is important. It's super exhausting. Good job, us.
Thank you. Guys, all have a wonderful evening.
Pat yourself on the bed.
All right.
Thank you.
Here we go.
Okay, well, wonderful evening from my point of view.
Thank you. Uh thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh at your last council meeting during council comments, I believe, Councilor Stupina uh expressed a desire to talk a little bit more about just. Um uh ICE in the community and just kind of communication around that. And I heard a majority of you asking to discuss that more, so. Put that on as an agenda item, but really looking for you to structure the conversation and let me know um. And let me know your thoughts.
You guys noticed I exercised my executive privilege of having a pledge of allegiance, a land acknowledgement and a reminder that we are in a sanctuary state. I think I'm gonna keep doing that for a bit.
Thank you. I wanna start by thanking our police officers who I see some of the. I know that this job is not easy and. We appreciate the service and sacrifice that you provide to help feed our community. I recognize the long hours, the risk. And the toll that this work can carry. And at the same time, I also have to acknowledge the reality that we are living in a moment. Do not feel safe. We're hearing stories of profiling at the year end of this class. And that being is very, very. It's a difficult truth, but one that we must face together. My hope is that we can continue creating a community where safety is felt by everyone, no matter who they are or where they come from, and that takes part.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, do I have to say it over again?
Oh, my gosh. Oh, do I have to say it over again? Happy to. Okay, I apologize for that. Let me start again. Thank you, Jen. Okay. I wanna start by thanking our police officers. I know that this is not an easy job, and I appreciate the service and the sacrifice that you provide to help our community safe. I recognize the long hours, the risk you take, and the toll that this work can carry. At the same time, I also have to acknowledge the reality that we are living in a moment where many people of color do not feel safe. We are hearing stories of profiling, of fear, and of mistrust, and that pain is very real in our community. It's a difficult truth, but one that we must face together if we're going to heal and build stronger trust. My hope is that we can continue creating a community where safety is felt by everyone, no matter who they are or where they come from. That takes partnership, transparency, and compassion on all sides. I believe in our ability to move forward, to protect, and to uplift every person in the city.
Doug. Yeah, I appreciate those sentiments, and equally, I think the desire that I have for transparency is to highlight what the police are doing correctly, right? So, you know, the examples of when ICE has been, have been in the community. You know, I know that our police department's not breaking any rules or, or going out of their way to, or have some political agenda. I know that, right? The community is living in a chaotic, fear-based state where there's a lot of misinformation, disinformation, a lot of social media. I know there's been times where people have thought of ICE had been here and it wasn't ICE, right? So I think what I'm looking for more is, you know, I know it's, it's, it's a weird thing to say, hey, this happened and we didn't do anything. But I think that we're a position, we're in the position of authority where, where we do have police, you know, briefings that come out and so on and so forth to explain, you know, what's happened to the community. So I know it's a, it's a strange ask to say, you know, we didn't do anything, but I think that helps build that transparency, helps build that trust. So that people are focusing their attention on the agencies that are doing this and not our police force, which they are not doing this, right? So it's an exceptional sort of ask, but you know, what that looks like to me in the form of communication is, you know, we have, you know, like the lieutenant puts out, you know, briefings every week, gets reported in the press, you know. I'd rather not have that lag time, you know, if, if the police department was made aware of an incident in the morning or the afternoon or whatever. You know, have something posted on social media, a press release, and it might be boilerplate in a lot of cases. It's just that, you know, it's, it's acknowledging each, each instance, and you know, these instances aren't happening every single day. But I think it would help quell some of the, the fear that's out there, would allow people to feel safer in their own community and, and at least try to dispel, you know, hearsay and, oh, I saw a car that did, that looked weird or whatever, and that kinda stuff. Like, if the police aren't putting out any statements of ICE being in the community and non-participation, I mean, where, where is the, like, who is, you know, people are gonna be looking to community groups and posts and, you know, Facebook book groups and those, those are just not positions that where people are, are doing things in a controlled and informative manner, it's, you know. So dispelling all that, I think, is important, too.
I give others a chance. First, others. Go ahead, guys.
Everything that Doug said and just reaffirming that, you know, Oregon has sanctuary laws and that we as a city are an inclusive city. So just giving some of that factual information that it's coming directly from the police department. You know, there's all sorts of organizations and I don't know if we wanna have like a toolkit of like, here's all the resources that can help support folks, but just giving, reminding folks that we are a sanctuary state, we're an inclusive city, and that that's not the intention of the police departments.
I, I really appreciate the comments that were shared earlier today, and I echo your sentiment. I think Gladys, you articulated that beautifully of where we are trying to do, you know, have our community feel welcome and safe and protective, and I acknowledge that this is a very it's a difficult time right now, and I, I acknowledge that the fear that people are feeling is, is real. I also think that our police force has, from a practical standpoint of like limited, I'd, I'd rather than be out there patrolling and doing their job and keeping our community safe than, you know, you know, posting Facebook statuses and stuff like that. I mean, I, I, if there's a way to be transparent and efficient, that's fine, but, and I don't mean to speak on behalf of Chief Holst, but I just don't think it's right to add more workload to our, our team and ask them to do more, because it's, I think that a lot of the fear is being perpetuated by social media posts that are, you know, little tidbits and things taken out of context. And I'm not sure that adding more information out there through social media is the answer to, you know, I to, to trying to quell that. I think that there's gotta be a different way that we can, you know, without perpetuating misinformation or taking little bit tidbits and focusing all of our time and energy and resources on posting more social media. I think that there's gotta be a, a better way to just, you know, again, live, live by example, and having our guys out there doing the work they're supposed to be doing and interacting with our community is probably the best way to, to build that trust and transparency.
I don't think there's anything that chief can do to help people feel safe, because there's a whole bunch of law enforcement out there in our country trying to catch people, and it's not ours, but it's the federal. Like, the chief can't defend our residents from that.
I think one thing that might be helpful in terms of clarifying, I know that, you know, the specific incident that Mar Ruth was talking about, that there was a discussion of that, you know, that there was a Hood River City Police present, and I don't know, like, if that was actually the case, but, you know, if it is the case in terms of like, there's police presence just on site, not assisting, but as present, because I don't know, I'm assuming that as law enforcement officers in this community, like, you want to know about what's going on in this community, especially when there's a very significant law enforcement, not a community law enforcement, but, you know, federal law enforcement action that's happening, to clarify that, you know, if there's a police on site there, that it's not working in tandem with ICE to enforce immigration rules, that it's there, you know. And again, I don't, I don't know what the actual situation is, but like, if you see Hood River Police and this is happening, this is like, you know, an observer situation, but just because they're present doesn't mean that they're actively engaging in an investigation. Like, I don't know if there's a certain policy that is tied to that, but I think that's where a lot of the confusion came from, is that people either did, did see or claimed to see Hood River Police there and extrapolated that into Hood River Police is assisting ICE. So if Hood River Police is going to be on site or, you know, witnessing these different kind of, you know, federal law enforcement actions to, I guess, be clear about what their presence or role is there.
Thank you. I, I think I wanna hear a little bit more about what Counselor Cavallaro was, was referring to, so I don't think we should not say anything at all. I also want to invite you folks to come up and be a part of this discussion on the intention isn't to necessarily add, add more work to your plates, right? There's already communications that are taking place of we receive, you know, weekly reports, maybe it's, there's very specific messaging that goes out that, for example, you know, chief, you're calling Jackie, and Jackie is placing that on our social media, not necessarily something that I feel needs to come directly from, from you at every single event or incident where, where this does come up. I also recognize that I mean, yeah, there's, there's things happening completely outside of all your controls and you don't have impact on federal policy that would prevent some of those pieces from coming, but the reality is that you know, folks just feel afraid, right? And how do we continue giving factual information and reminding folks that the laws as they are written now prevents, you know, you all from actively engaging and participating in such activities?
I feel like nearly, you know, like a mantra, like, you know, choose your mantra, like, just say it. Sanctuary state, inclusive city. Our cops don't help them. You can't protect from them. They have a budget bigger than the US Marine Corps, but we're not helping them. That's the best we can hope for.
Thank you, Mayor. I think an easy piece for me is to agree, like, everything we can do to reassure people that we are following state law, that we are, you know, that we, we have a safe and inclusive community. I think we can do and have been doing in as many different venues as we can. So you know, the chief and the mayor, we're at open houses, we've been on Radio Tierra and other places. We can step up those efforts, and we can, I think, make those kind of comments, you know. When we hear that there is community concern, I'm a little bit concerned about like, oh, I saw a van down the street, or I saw an officer pull somebody over. Those are hard to respond to on like, I mean, to me, that's a little like next door, like, whoa, what's going, you know, that kind of gossipy piece, but absolutely the message in every opportunity we can to say, we are, you know, the sanctuary state, we follow those laws. We do not assist ICE except when required by a judicial warrant. Those, you know, and I, I talked to Jackie earlier today and said we'd be having this conversation about what can we do as a city in communications. I hear a little bit about like responding to specific situations. You know, I think a number of us have talked, I've talked to all of you individually about this and just some concerns about, again, like, a lot of times, the particular incident that precipitated this conversation was not a city operation, and so was really limited on what we could say about that. We didn't know if the operation was finished. We didn't know if there would be public information about it. You know, the DEA present, provided something, we shared a post from the sheriff much, you know, a couple days after the fact. And the other piece of that, of course, is we did not know that ICE was on the scene. I know other folks have said that has been an officer or that license plate has been traced to ICE. We don't actually know that because we didn't stay long enough to confirm those things, so it's hard to send out a press release that says, I don't have any information because we didn't stick around long enough to find out. But, you know, absolutely the fundamental messages of safety, well, you know, inclusivity, following state law, those are pieces that we can, you know, absolutely use every opportunity we can to share that message.
Amanda.
Um, I understand what you're saying about if we don't know, but if we do know, like, I'm assuming there are circumstances where we do know what is happening, can we?
Yeah, and that's a good question, because ICE does not have a responsibility to share information with us. They don't coordinate with us. They don't let us know if they're going to be here. And if there's a, you know, if they are coordinating with federal agencies, I don't think the other federal agencies are going to tell us that they expect ICE on the scene, so.
Right, but not, not if we expect it, but like, if something happens and we know because we were there and we know for a fact that that was ICE or whatever, can we, can we then say something about it? Like, can we ever say anything?
I don't know what our permission is to say, you know, if it's not our operation, I don't know that we have permission or, or authority to speak on behalf of what happened.
But what if, you know, for example, that situation where we do know that they were here, right? That it's at that moment, kind reminder, we're a sanctuary state, and that's really all you have to say. We don't have to go, at this day, at this time, here's the activity. We understand that there's certain legalities that prevent from that information to be disseminated, but something really clear to hint, like, hey, we know what you're all thinking and talking about. Here's a kind reminder. We follow, we follow the state law, right? And we are an inclusive city and just reiterating that piece.
Sheriff and Sal and I actually were up at Mid Valley Elementary a few months back, and it was really interesting. I was the chief, I was sitting next to Sal, that's why. And somebody said basically, Sheriff, if I call your office, do you have to tell me if ICE is in town? And I sort of had this lightbulb moment of like, that's a way that some people think of it, that like the information clearinghouse. But that's like the last, I'm sorry, that's the last thing I want our folks doing. Like, they're not like, asking around where's ICE. They're like enforcing the laws to keep our community safe. So that clearinghouse notion is such a sort of seductive idea, but that is not it. Like, you guys are not in charge of knowing whether ICE is here. That's not, that's sorry, that's not it. But that's a hard message to, to, to absorb, I guess.
And maybe that's another piece of our messaging is, you know, that not only are we a sanctuary state and we follow state law, but we, you know, ICE does not coordinate with us. They don't give us a courtesy call if they're gonna be in town. You know, maybe we can share, if folks have expectations about information they think we have and are not sharing, we can be more transparent about what we actually know.
Ben and then Doug.
Yeah, I think it's about using specific incidents to highlight general policy, meaning the specific incident is a prompt for talking about what overarching policy is. It doesn't mean you have to do the who, what, where, when, and why, or, or even, you know, address any of those things, but it's to, like, what Counselor Rivera was pointing to, just like, understanding that there's this, you know, pall over the community prompted by a specific event, and I think that this was like, I mean, I'm not as in tune to, to, you know, that community as you are, but I seemed like this was a very big event that caught a lot of people's attention. And so when there's something like that out there, that, you know, this, this incident, I think, provides a good opportunity to be like, hey, here's just like a primer of like, what are, what we do, what we don't do, what that situation is, like, maybe it's not a press release, maybe it's a video speaking to the community about like, we understand these are the concerns, like, you know, this is the deal. But it, it, it got a lot of people's attention, and that's why we're, that's why we're talking about it.
And yeah, I mean, I, I don't think I've in any way insinuated, like, let's have a, let's have our police department out there looking to see if ICE is or isn't here, right? Like, I'm not, I'm not looking to add to workload. I'm, I'm, exactly what Ben said is like, it's important to not a month later have a message that says, oh, yeah, by the way, we're, we're, you know, this, this is what state law is. It's, it's also very important to, to get out into the community what our involvement isn't, right? So that, that, it's, it's, people do not know. I mean, people come up to us all the time and they ask us about things. It's like, that's the state. Oh, that's the Parks Department. Like, you know, people don't understand the nuance of government. They certainly don't understand the nuance of this. And, and there are many allegations for police departments throughout Oregon that are assisting. So there's all these forces working against, you know, our, our local police forces, which I think are doing a very good job. And I don't think it's fair for them to, you know, be wrapped up in, you know, what different levels of government are doing, and I, I don't think it's, like, I don't want anybody to be fearful of seeing a Hood River Police officer, you know, if they're, they have brown skin. Right? Um, it's something we could like, seriously, like, you know, it's, this, this is like generations of issues, but like, right now, racial profiling is a thing. It's, it's fresh in everybody's mind. You know what I mean? So it's, it's
It's federal policy.
And it's, yeah, legal. It is federal policy. So there's another tool that folks have, right? And that level of fear of I, I don't know if I can leave my house because I don't know where folks stand is, is terrifying.
I think people need to be afraid. It's a huge federal force trying to hurt people.
But not of our police department. That's, that's, you know, in any way you can do that.
Yeah.
I mean,
I mean, that should be worrying for all of us, all of us.
Um, I do, I think, Ben, you mentioned this, but I kinda like the idea of, yeah, maybe instead of doing more like texts and press release types, we do more videos of like people talking and make it like more of a human connection of like, these aren't just words. We're people. This is what we're saying. We're saying it to you right now. They're coming. The words are coming out of my mouth, you know, like, I think that could really have a, a good impact.
Anything else on this topic? Thanks, y'all, so much. Chief and your folks, thank you so much for your great work. You too, Sheriff. All right, we're gonna move on to city manager comments. You're right there, Abigail.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no updates. I have a long list of things to just send you. Thank you, Mayor. I have, uh, no updates. I have a long list of things to just send you emails, including uh, the link to the code um, video that just, just dropped today. Uh, and then I also thought I would send you a short summary of the code audit, um, the code audit community engagement plan that you adopted, uh, last year, just as a reminder of, uh, where we were with that. Uh, but I also have a long list of things. Uh, I want to thank the councilors who, uh, toured the jail. I think we had a really great experience. Thank you for doing that. Um, LOC conference will be in early October. Um, I believe, Council Geeky, are you going a day? One day?
Oh, that's awesome.
And, uh, Council Rivera has signed up for, um, the conference, so, we've asked, uh, Council Rivera to be your official de- voting delegate at the, um, and, uh, we will send out the information as we have it.
Are you VP?
I'm on the women's caucus. Not VP yet.
That's the spirit.
So, uh, that's it. And then just remember, uh, back here next Monday, uh, our clan, Will and I, like he said, are fleshing out the details for our special meeting, but we anticipate more sitting here, not on the dais, not motions, really just uh, presenting, you know, you've had three weeks, uh, three last three meetings, you've had just a, um, base or a foundation of information about bonds. Now we're going to talk to the nitty gritty of what are the, some of the things that have been identified as needs in the city? And do you want us to do more work on that? What do you want with public engagement and other pieces? So, um,
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock. Casual, here.
I will be in New Jersey, so I'll be zooming in. Who's going to be here?
Council President.
Right.
Council President is aware that you will be zooming, so can coordinate those pieces. Um, but again, and you know, again, we won't have motions and, uh, votes, so that should be fairly easy. Um, and we'll have um, information for you early, probably tomorrow or Wednesday morning. Um, but if you would like to meet with Will or myself before that meeting, um, can work with Jen to schedule that. Um, love to get your thoughts ahead of time if you have the time.
So will you, I mean, the standard process is Thursday's agenda items are available. Is that will something be available Thursday for us to look at and review to give feedback?
Yes. In fact, I hope to get, uh, some basic information. I think that, you know, because it's a special meeting, the packet will probably just be an agenda. But we probably have some supplementary information, and whatever we have, we're going to try to share with you as soon as we can, so you can rebuild those pieces.
What else?
Those are my things. Thank you.
Committee reports, Amanda.
Have one. Um, I went to my first McCade board meeting. But this new, being new to me, I'm just going to look at this, uh, summary. I'm going to look at some notes. Um, yeah, it was my first one. I was surprised about how many people are on the McCade board. That was huge. I was like, whoa. Um, uh, let's see, it was like their annual meeting or our annual meetings, so we approved, um, reappointment of eight private sector members and three loan administration board members. Uh, we discussed the financial report. And there was a big messy, a lot of yucky stuff, I guess, in the past, that they're still working on audits and stuff like that, and they don't have the same accountant, and they didn't have one for a while or something, so that just sounds yucky, but they're working through it and they should almost be done, um, by November. The board also approved the agenda and yeah, it wasn't, I don't feel like there was too much. There was, um, a lot of like, I think a lot of the time was just kind of giving updates from all the people. Um, which it was interesting, and I look forward to finding out more and doing more on that board.
Thanks for your work. Grant, committee?
Nothing.
None for me.
Yes, uh, the Saruda Board met this last week. There is a, uh, a trip that is planned for this next coming year sometime in July. It's really intended for students. There are sixty applicants in the pool, and so they have to figure out twenty of them to be able to go. I also, let me borrow this real quick. There will be an event, and I shared a little brochure with each one of you. The, uh, the museum is hosting a temporary exhibit. It's, um, dedicating a rotary piece pool. In addition to that, there's also going to be the paper cranes through our eyes exhibit. That will happen September twenty seventh at 1:00 PM. I did give all my peers a copy of this, in case you want to check it out. There will be free admission. Um, and looking to host individuals from Saruda this next coming, uh, or in twenty seven, we've also been talking about what does that look like? How do we ensure that folks feel welcomed and loved when they come to visit us? Um, Counselor Poulsen and Abigail and I had a chance to join an LOC event that took place, really talking about some communications messaging for um, measures five and fifty and um, lot of conversations around what cities are currently doing around the marketing piece, and I, I mentioned this to Abigail, and I just want to highlight this to all of you. Um, I personally, sometimes I'm like, we need to do more messaging, more communications. And it was nice to know that compared to some other cities, we, we do have a robust communications, uh, system and process. So I do want to thank everyone. Jackie, special shout out to you, um, for all the work that, that happens there. Uh, I do have an MCAC meeting tomorrow, so at our next meeting, I will give you another update in addition to the county meeting that, that I missed.
Thank you, Ben.
Uh, nothing really from me. Um, gonna meet up with, uh, Vice Chair Megan Ramey of CAT once the, it keeps getting pushed back, but once the special session is over to talk about how that may or may not impact CAT. Um, still haven't heard back about, uh, regional solutions, if I'm on that or not. It's been three months since the application, so don't know what's going on there. I've heard the state government is busy, so that's, that's impacting it, but that's all from me.
Nothing for me.
I had a meeting with the governor's office and Dustin about Habitat for Humanity, which is building four homes and, you know, they're hoping that we could be more supportive or, you know, STCs and et cetera, et cetera. And we had some good conversation about that, and it sounds like there's some ways we can be helpful to them, and Dustin was talking over my head, and that was fantastic. Um, I'm excited that Habitat's like doing something here. It feels like in my twenty-five years, I haven't seen that in, in our city, so I was glad that Habitat was present. Um, that's all that I have today. Council comments? Anna?
I don't have anything.
Ben?
Uh, I attended the tour of, uh, Norcore. This is my first time, uh, being there, uh, in any capacity. Um, um, it was, uh, it was very interesting, and I thank, uh, staff and the, uh, Norcore staff for uh, putting that on for, for us and.
Yeah, I just, uh, looking forward to the third round of Civics 101 classes that will take place, uh, on Tuesdays. Looking forward to meeting new individuals and help them have a better understanding of how our city operates, so appreciate all the staff involved and, and being able to host that into our community partners the next door. Uh, lastly, I just want to talk about, um, Hispanic Heritage Month. As a proud Latina, Hispanic Heritage Month holds a deep meaning for me. It's a time to honor the resilience and the sacrifices our parents and our ancestors who dreamed of a better future for us. Uh, this, this courage fuels my own purpose to use my voice, my seat at this table, and my privilege to have the ability to open doors and create space for others. Our voice matters. Nuestra voz importa. Representation matters because it tells others that they too belong, that they too are seen, heard, and supported. In a time where immigrants are, are too often targeted or silenced, we stand together and remind us all that we are, we are not criminals. We are dreamers, parents, leaders, people who love our communities and help them thrive. The Hispanic heritage is more than a celebration. It's a call to action to uplift Latino voices, to invest in Latino businesses, to keep fighting for equity and inclusion. Because Unidos podemos con todo, together we can do anything.
That reminds me, I got, uh, input from a constituent that he was shocked that our police were enforcing the under sixteen e-bike rule, so I, uh, disagreed somewhat sharply with him in reply to that. Doug?
Uh, so heard from Lorraine Lyons earlier, who came here from Hood River Adopt a Dog. Um, you know, Abigail and I, and I had a coffee sit-down with her last week. Everything blurs together. Weekends are not the thing. Um, so, you know, but it, it's an eye-opening sort of conversation that we had about just, you know, how, how that place does not get funded, um, how funding's running out. Uh, Lorraine's been talking with, you know, the city Cascade Locks, the county, us, et cetera. Um, I think it's worth our time before that shelter gets shut down to coordinate with Hood River Adopt a Dog to see what options there are for the city. Uh, to help funding or re, uh, configure the way that we receive services through the county, you know, anything that, you know, we can do, because I feel like the message is out there that it will be gone. And I feel like it's a pretty important service to have in our community, to have a shelter, to, to not have our police officers bringing animals out to far places, you know, like we already have uh, ambulatory care, like going to Portland, and, you know, we don't have like, you know, a full staff here because we have to go back and forth. I'd hate to do that for like animal control, because as we know, animal control usually is falling, you know, on off nights or off, off hours and weekends to, to our police department. Um, but, you know, I, I, I don't want to also add anything to Abigail's plate without, um, you know, asking the council if they'd also like to explore something like this. I'd say we could wait for another time, but they're, they're pretty much on their heels at this point, and I think donations, like Lorraine was saying earlier, are, are great, and the community does help, but the, the situation right now is, is pretty dire.
Abigail, I, I, I remember we discussed this two years ago, maybe, something like that. And I don't remember, I mean, I remember we talked about the specifics, you know, that, that Chief, Chief Holstein's staff is doing a lot of the work. I remember there was, um, the gal from the sheriff's office, I cannot remember her name, that stopped by and just talked a little bit about those best practices.
Right. I think you might be thinking of last August.
Okay.
The, um, well, first you discussed it in June, and then in August, um, the county administrator, uh, the animal control officer, um, and undersheriff Rocket were here uh, to talk about that. We signed a two-year contract, um, or two-year IGA with the, um, county, so we're one year into that, and I have, I was checking with the chief to see if we've gotten statistics. I will, if not, I will ask the county for a mid, uh, IGA review, you know, what, where are the statistics looking right now? So, um, but you might remember at that time, uh, if I'm recalling correctly, it, the county's lease with Adopt a Dog does not allow them to like lease uh, kennels to us or to have, uh, make arrangements outside of their county arrangements for less than what, uh, our arrangement is with the county. So there was no cost savings for the city in using Adopt a Dog instead of the county.
So at, at this point, it's, it's basically like we contribute to the dog getting to the facility, but after that, there's nothing.
We still have one more year on that, and so I'm thinking probably in May, June, we'll bring that back to you so we can, um, figure out what you want to do going forward.
Okay. So then, Counselor Stapina, are you, for example, we support McCAC fiscally with some, some money, right, on a yearly basis? Is that what you're asking for, that we do something along those lines, or help me understand?
I think if we're pushed into that situation, yes, but I think, and Abigail, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it'd be more desirable to contract for services directly. Um, it's cleaner, um.
Certainly, I had, I heard interest in that last year.
Right, right. Um, and, you know, I mean, the conditions are, 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 you know, this is a fluid situation. I'm not sure what the county's response would be. Um, but, you know, I would like Abigail to spend time speaking to sheriff English to, you know, to sort of understand from his perspective. We're hearing from H Rad, which, you know, uh, what they've uh, heard directly from the sheriff, et cetera, you know, I'd, I'd rather have us, you know, be informed directly. But also if there's a way for us to sort of, what are, are, are our options? You know, what does a contract change look like? Could we, you know, for example, like the DOWs, it's not in a county building, so it's different, but they get to rent like the city of the DOWs and Wasco County have like kennels and things like that, and it just seems clear that the support going forward with the exhaustion of that fund, which is like, you know, even, it's probably like ten percent of their operating costs, but it's like, even that is, at this point, it's kind of crazy for them. So it's like, you know, what are our options? And can we work with the other, you know, you know, governments in the, in the area to, to figure out something to, you know, what's, what's, what's equitable for everybody and, you know, what, what does a phase two look like if we even have one? Because the, the phase one is, is, uh, is not going to work anymore. I probably get funded.
Uh, I, I'd be open to, to having this discussion. I guess the piece that I clearly remember from that presentation was that our city police does a lot more work, and so open to discussion, but if we were to go into a contract agreement, what does that mean for like our local police? Because there are, if I remember correctly, they, whenever the, the animal control individual is out, it's city police that's responding and, and doing all of that. So I'd love to understand that a little bit more.
No, I mean, I'm just, does, do you, do you feel like you have support from the council? You know, to spend some time?
Slurs. I mean, certainly I can write you a quick memo summarizing last year's piece of it and, uh, maybe some quick options, but if you want to do something more in-depth, I'd be looking for some direction.
Amanda and Anna?
I support something, anything.
Yeah, I feel like I don't understand how any of this, like, I know there's animal control, I know there's Adopt a Dog, there's a sheriff, there's our police, but I don't know how all of this works together at all. So I'd love more information on that. But definitely support, uh, moving forward with some solution, yeah.
And, and that's something, again, like ad hoc, we understand this, you know, the chief understands this, but like Hood River Adopt a Dog hasn't come here formally to present to you, you know, I mean, you know, like, you know, that kind of thing too, so maybe if Abigail suggests something like that, but yeah, it's, you know.
How about I, um, I work with the chief to put together just a short memo of kind of summarizing where we were last year, the highlights of the IGA and, um, and some of the questions that had come up about why the city just cannot uh, contract directly with her Adopt a Dog, and then maybe, once you've seen that, you can decide if you want to do more research or have some kind of direction with that work? Give me a couple of weeks to put that together.
Including some stats like, h- h- how much of the, how much of the volume of, of, of dogs is, is ours, you know, I mean, we don't have to prop up the county.
Those statistics from last year, because we asked for those in the, I can also, if you'd like, I went back and watched the, the discussion from June and, uh, August last year. I can send you the the YouTube links if you'd like to watch the discussion again. I feel like I spend a lot of my free time watching old council meetings.
Well done.
I, I appreciate that they're available for that, so. Um, I can send you those links, but I'll, let me also work with the chief, and we'll put together a short memo that gives you an overview of this, and then you can decide if there's action you want to take.
Anything else, though? Grant?
Um, yeah, uh, definitely sending the information about Adopt a Dog. A couple of things, um, I will remind the public to take the Parks and Rec pool survey. Uh, if Parks and Rec does not have complete, as complete information from the public in, input-wise as possible, they're kind of more or less flying blind. Um, public input's always a, a good thing to have when you have elected people that are trying to make responsible decisions on behalf of the public for which they serve. Um, regarding our earlier conversation about ICE and DEA, specifically the comment about the DEA post um, on social media, apparently, uh, on Twitter, wherever it was, um, we don't control what other people post on the internet. Um, so grain of salt. Um, and as all things on the internet, or if you see a snippet in time, uh, that may not give someone full context or uh, a complete story. So without seeing, uh, if you just see a snippet or see what somebody else says, um, you might want to wait until you actually hear from the source. In this case, if the topic is us, the city of Hood River, I want to ask us. Um, and look forward to getting everything else done that we have on our work plan for the rest of this year, especially next week. Yeah, thanks.
Amanda?
I don't really have much. Um, I'm looking forward to the first conference thing for the city that I have coming up. Even if it's just a day, um, but one of the sessions I'm looking for- Even if it's just a day. Um, but one of the sessions I'm looking forward to is surround the conversation or, well, I don't know, but about sanctuary cities and stuff. So I'm looking forward to leaning something good from that. So.
Super. I think that brings us to the end of the agenda. Anything else for the good of the order? See you guys in a week.